Okay, so I am going to open the meeting tonight. I will give the call to order. And at this time, I'm going to actually ask Kristin Vincent if she could do me the favor of reading the COVID meeting guidelines before we begin.
Sure, thanks. Today's Wednesday, March 10th, 2021. Thank you for joining us this evening at this remote livestream school committee meeting. Due to the impacts of the COVID-19 virus, some aspects of the open meeting law have been suspended. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Westboro School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. Town officials and Westboro TV have worked together to hold this meeting via televideoconference and broadcast it as such on Westboro TV's government channels, Verizon 28 and Charter 192, and streamed online on the Westboro TV YouTube channel for persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress. Any votes we take this evening will be roll call votes due to the remote participation. If you would like to speak at an upcoming school committee meeting during citizens' requests, please email your request prior to the start of the meeting to school-committee@westboroK12.org. And I thank you to Westboro TV for covering the broadcast tonight. And as a reminder, a recording of this meeting can be accessed from the Westboro TV website or YouTube channel at any time. So I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Buck.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have you all here with us tonight. We have a lot to accomplish. Following an election is protocol that I formally open the meeting, and we manage the proceedings until we appoint a new chair. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the chair.
I propose Kristin Vincent for the chair.
We have first, we have a second.
I'll second.
Lisa Edinburgh, second to motion for Kristin Vincent for chair. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, I would do a roll call vote. I will start with Dorret.
Dorret, yes.
Edinburgh?
Edinburgh, yes.
Nandan?
Nandan, yes.
Delay?
Uh, Delay, yes.
Vincent?
Vincent, yes.
All right, it is unanimous. And at this time, I will now turn it over to Kristin Vincent as the newly-elected chair of the school committee.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for this honor. I'm honored to continue on as chair, to see this school year through to the end, and also to, you know, continue the work that we're doing. So thank you. So we now need to nominate and vote on a vice chair slash secretary. The vice chair shares the role of secretary as well. And is there a motion for that nomination for that?
I'll nominate Steve Dorret for vice chair of the school committee.
Okay, and is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion about that? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Sarah.
Delay, yes.
Raghu?
Nandan, yes.
Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve?
Dorret, yes.
And Vincent, yes. So that is a unanimous vote for Steve Dorret to be our vice chair and secretary. And I'm thrilled to have Steve in this role again. Steve, your knowledge of Westboro and of town government and policy and process is so important to us, to me and this team. So thank you so much for serving again for another year as our vice chair.
Thank you, and thank you all for voting for me. I appreciate the opportunity. And yes, we will do probably even better this year. And thank you for serving as well, Kristin.
Sure, thanks, Steve. Any questions or comments about this before we move on? All right, so I'm gonna just review who we have on this call with us tonight, and then I'll review the agenda. So on this call tonight, we have Superintendent Amber Buck, we have Assistant Superintendent Dr. Daniel Mayer, we have the vice chair of the Westboro School Committee, Steve Dorret, we have school committee members Sarah Delay, Lisa Edinburgh, and Raghu Nandan. Our student representative Kyla Kamubu is here, our recording secretary Jen Benton. We have Karen Henderson from Westboro TV handling the livestream and recording. And we have some guest speakers tonight. We have Jack Foley, who's the principal of Gibbons Middle School, and Pat Nash, who's the vice principal of Gibbons Middle School. We have Sherry Stevens, Director of Student Services. And I think maybe Roger Anderson or Kim Tynan might be joining us later as they're available to join into the meeting. Our Director of Finance and Administration Irene Oliver cannot be with us tonight, but we will certainly fill in any financial questions. And we do plan to do a more thorough financial update at our next meeting. So our agenda for the meeting is as follows. So we just had the reorganization of the school committee and had elections of the school committee chair and vice chair. Then we're gonna review school committee appointments. We regularly do that after an election. We'll continue on with an approval of minutes from February 24th, 2021 regular session. We'll have a superintendent's report and reports from the assistant superintendent. We'll have school committee member reports and building project updates. We do not have any citizens' requests tonight. And then we have a lot of agenda items under the COVID-19 impact update, and we're gonna switch the order just a little bit. So we're gonna do the data dashboard review, that's always there for us to have access to. But then we're gonna bump up the fine arts report and have just a brief update on changes in fine arts and how we can move forward with more fine arts in our schools. And then we will look at survey data. We'll have a review of target start dates for returning more students to in-person learning. We'll have a more in-depth discussion and presentation about plans for Gibbons Middle School. We'll have a presentation on social and emotional learning, and here's some updates of work that's been done in that area. And we will also have an update and some action around pooled testing. And we'll finish the agenda with a Warren article bid, an update for the high school gymnasium partitions. We have an updated cost for that, and we need to take a look at that and change the Warren article for the meeting. And then we will move into executive session. We do have a need for an executive session. So we are gonna start with school committee appointments. And since this is the first regular session meeting of the school committee after our town elections, we annually appoint or reappoint school committee members to committees and subcommittees and boards. And I see Daniel has brought up the link to that. And since the chair and vice chair have remained the same for the following year, I propose that we have no changes right now to these school committee appointments. And I just wanted to know if anyone had any discussion about that or any thoughts about our appointments?
I think it's a good idea. I think everybody's got comfortable. Go ahead.
No, I'm fine with that, too. The only thing I noticed is that Raghu's name is on the supervision evaluation subcommittee, which is fine, but I actually attended the meeting at the beginning of the year, so I don't know if, because I thought, because you, because Kristin had been on that committee, and I thought I subbed in for you, but Raghu totally could have, too, and maybe I just stole his meeting he was supposed to go to.
Yeah. Yeah, and I can't remember what we did last time.
We can leave it as. Raghu, if you have time, I would like to serve on the supervision evaluation committee. I'm happy to have you keep that committee.
Raghu, you're on.
Oh, sorry. Sarah, that's okay if you want that, you know, I could, I could, either way is fine with me.
Okay, well, why don't we leave, well, since Raghu's name is there, let's leave Raghu assigned to that committee appointment. Well, you know, we'll leave you there. And then whenever, you know, that group gets together for their next meeting, Sarah, if you get the invitation, just to make sure everyone's aware that Raghu is supposed to be there. And then Raghu, if you have questions about your role on that committee, just reach out, you can reach out to me or reach out to Sarah, and he can help you out with that.
Sounds good.
And I think Daniel is usually the person who is kind of overseeing those meetings, too, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. Any other questions or discussions about school committee appointments?
Lisa, I was just gonna say, this sort of gives you a sneak peek into what goes on beyond these meetings of school committee, that we are all on several subcommittee meetings where much work is being done in all different capacities. And just, this is one of those moments where you can sort of see how much other work happens with all these other subcommittees. I'm delving through right now again, as we do yearly, and just seeing that there's a lot that happens. Yeah, so congratulations to all my fellow school committee members, because you're doing the hard work there on so many pieces. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a, that's a good point, Lisa. And so some of these meet weekly or monthly, or, you know, some meet as needed. And then we always have other subcommittees that come up when we have, you know, a targeted timeline for some work to be done. So this is a great look at what we're doing, and so it was great to revisit this. All right, so if there's no changes, we can just leave it as is. And we can move on to an approval of minutes. So we need to approve minutes from February 24th, 2021 regular session. Is there a motion to approve those?
I can make a motion to approve the February 24th regular session minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion about those minutes? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Sarah?
Uh, Delay, yes.
Raghu?
Nandan, yes.
Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Vincent, yes. So five-zero, those are approved. And thank you once again to Jen Benton, who takes excellent minutes of our meetings and gets them to us very quickly. So thanks, Jen. So I'm gonna turn it over to Amber for a superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. We have a lot to cover, and Daniel and I recognize that in our updates, we're really doing a lot of talking through the COVID updates. So as of now, I'm gonna say that I am good for tonight, and I will save the focus of my conversation points when we get to that section of the agenda.
Sounds good. And Daniel, the same for you. Anything else you need to share?
The only one thing is, is just a lot of fun to see all the kindergarteners back in school, and to walk through those classrooms. And the faculty is really happy to see them, and the kids clearly are like, you know, pleased to be there. And so just, you know, that plus the feeling with the vaccines coming of like, you know, a dawn is coming for us. So just, and then we'll give more updates later when we get to the COVID-19 impact part of the station for the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure with the warmer weather coming, you know, seeing kids playing outside, and it's just, it's a good feeling. Thank you. And then, Daniel, I think you're still sharing the agenda, but would you mind stop sharing it, just because I have trouble seeing everybody on Zoom? If I have to like, look at that, too?
I do not mind at all. Thanks for reminding me sometimes I forget that I'm sharing my screen.
So just with all the reports we have coming up, I like to be able to see everyone on my screen, too. Thank you.
Yep.
So we'll move into school committee member reports. We'll start with Kyla, if you have anything to share from the schools?
Yes, I do. First of all, congratulations on reelection.
Thank you.
Happy to have you. School is currently going well. The warmer weather has definitely made the mask breaks easier on everybody, because now we can actually eat and not just huddle up for warmth. Teachers have now begun getting the COVID vaccine, which has been really beneficial and has really lightened the mood on all of our teachers. We can clearly see that they're really happy. And there have been concerns from parents and students respectively about the Gibbons and like moving to teamwork and stuff like that about the COVID. So I just wanted to raise that concern to the school committee, but other than that, I do not have any more.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Sarah, anything?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. Sorry, I think my internet was cutting out before during the subcommittee talks. I hope it's better now. So thank you, Raghu, for that conversation. I just wanna thank all the candidates and voters that came out for the election last week. I appreciate all the candidates that are willing to share their time and talents with the town. The large turnout was very welcome, and I hope that all those voters that came out for the election will come out for town meeting in the spring on May 15th. Little plug for town meeting, because that's always important in town process as well. And I want to welcome Kristin back, and I appreciate you willing to take on the role of chair again. I know you kind of, you had a, missing a few months, because we didn't actually switch till June last year, so I know you wanted to make up some time there, so. For sure. And since I spoke about vaccines at the last meeting, I thought I'd just give a quick update from literally what I heard today, and I'm sure other people heard today as well, that there are gonna be four days set aside just for school personnel and staff. There are three Saturdays in March and April, and then I think one Sunday as well, and the dates are out there. And then along with just kind of overhaul of the system for the general public, the eligible people can now pre-register for appointments, so maybe that'll help, help the process. And then I also heard that many school staff, I mean, I just, but in general, have been getting appointments through CVS, so I do appreciate CVS stepping up as well to make that happen for people. So hopefully, there's some ground being made up there for everyone.
Great, thank you. Good update. And before we move on, Steve, we're getting like some feedback from your phone, so if you could mute until it's your turn, then I think the camera can stay on the person who's talking. So we'll move to Raghu. Do you have anything to share tonight?
Yeah, so the, this is just so that we kinda, I kinda learned as part of Sustainable Westboro, I attended a three-week, every Wednesday between 11:00 to 12:30, three-week webinar on electric school buses. And that was a huge learning curve for me, learnt a lot of things. Apparently, the, the electric utility provider, Northeast Utility and others, have a grant program. The, the, the attraction for them is these school buses get charged during the night times when nobody else is using much electricity. And that's a good use for them, and also during summer times when they, when they have a peak demand for their electricity, these school buses are not running, so they don't, they don't get charged. So, so it was a good discussion around that, and there's many, many grant programs that I learnt. And there's a, there's a company out of Massachusetts. I gathered the contact information and everything for that company. They have been contracted with Beverly Schools, which is trying with one, and they plan to go to six electric buses soon. And this company takes care of the bus itself, running of the bus, all the maintenance and the store, you know, charging, changing the batteries, any of that, for $23,000 a year per bus. So, so they take, they could do that because they get grants that they themselves apply on, as part of school districts, to the federal grant. They have a grant writer and somebody who's researching all this and does that on behalf of the school district and procure it. So Beverly is trying to, I put a call to Beverly to find out how it's working and just learn. We, we don't have to, there's many other fires to burn right now, but it's good to know what's out there. And when, when the time is ripe, we can look at it and perhaps have this company come to us in one of our school committee meetings and provide a presentation. So that's my take.
Thank you. That does sound interesting. And it'll be interesting to see if bus companies will start to, you know, use more electric vehicles, so we'll have to kind of monitor that, but good to, to learn more about that. Lisa, I'm gonna move to you, but did you, did you say there's a problem with the livestream?
Yeah, I'm getting, my phone is blowing up, and there are people texting me from right and left to tell me that the YouTube channel is not live streaming correctly right now, that for some reason, it's looping and rather than streaming, and there does seem to be a problem if I just let.
Yeah, I'm getting, my phone is blowing up.
TV know that.
And there are people texting me from right and left to tell me that.
People concerned that they're missing something.
Channel is not live streaming correctly right now.
Can they, can they opt, can they pick the Westboro TV?
It's looping and rather than. Right, so what is it? It's a channel 28 and 192, and you're on. I don't know if, how we tell people that on YouTube right now, but I'm not sure how to make that happen, but maybe there, it's a fix if possible, but just to let.
Apparently, it's also on channel 28 as well, because my better half is trying to watch that, and the same, same problem happened there.
Oh, so I just got an update. It's working again?
Yeah, I heard it's working now, too, yeah.
Unbelievable.
All right, that's good. Thank you, Karen.
Good job stalling.
Excellent.
Yeah, that was all planned, all part of the plan. Thank you, everyone, for your feedback about that. I'll let Lisa continue with her.
Okay, so I do have some updates. One, I wanted to congratulate Kristin Vincent on her reelection. I'm proud and honored to work with her, and so excited that she is chairperson of the school committee, continuing her spot there to help us all along our way. I also wanted Abby Makuchi to know I'm open and welcome to, you know, communicating so that you and I keep our lines open, so that, you know, every aspect of what's happening that, you know, we keep, you know, talking to each other and making sure that, you know, things move along, and, and that, you know, you're a part of that process of helping us move forward. So just wanted to put that out there as well. Also, I wanted to send kudos to our six principals and assistant principals and the staff that is working so hard, and so many changes happening for full in person. There's just so much, so many logistics and work happening behind the scenes that I just, it's just an unbelievable task at hand that is moving forward and working very effectively. And just wanted to say, congratulations to this group of principals that have been really doing the very, very, very hard work, and, and their entire staff. It's extraordinary. Another update is that the bus drivers were added to the eligibility list for vaccines last Monday. They made a plea to the governor to say, teachers vaccinated, why not bus drivers? Some of you may have been wondering it yourself. NRT reported that they're trying to create a day for those, our bus drivers to become vaccinated, so that they're part of that process. That's not really confirmed yet. Another update is, I have been asked on many occasions, and we've actually brought this up over the past year, there was a question about why we haven't been meeting in person, and just really, well, I'll just reiterate it, since we've definitely talked about it in our meetings before over the past, since last March. We have brought it up a couple of times, we have readdressed it a couple of times, asked ourselves, and the guidelines, whether it's possible. In-person meetings up and as of February 4th had been 10 people, six foot feet distance, maximum eight people per thousand square feet. We are an executive body, not a legislative body. That's very important. So we were limited to 10 people, and if you look at our meeting right now, we have, we have 14 people here. If meeting in person, open meetings must be open and accessible to the public. Public can't meet in person and have some remote. That's important, because the governor's order about modified open meeting law requires that you're either in one or the other. That's different from if we were in person and one member was calling in. So you might be asking yourself, but that doesn't make sense, because schools are totally different. True, schools were exempt from the interior gathering restriction, so are hospitals, legislative bodies, including the state and town meetings, were all exempt. And yes, it's completely counterintuitive. We all believe and agree with that, but it was and has been the law. But recently, February 25th, the governor's new order about 50% capacity with six-foot distancing, that's phase three, step two. Thus far, I haven't seen anything posted about the restrictions being rescinded. So we will maybe be able to do it, be in person, but the state just hasn't posted the updated guidance yet. And also, on March 22nd, they're increasing to 100 people indoors, that six-foot distance, also masked. So we'll just have to figure it out as we go along. So I'm sure we'll be readdressing that at some point when we get more guidance and we can move forward. But recently, someone asked me about it again, so I thought I would bring it up in my reports. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. And yeah, we will be revisiting the idea of doing in-person meetings again. And it's interesting, when I read the statement at the beginning of the meeting, you know, it's like March 15th and March 22nd, and that's a year ago. So for a year, we've been, you know, doing meetings like this. So yeah, we look forward to in-person meetings again soon. Steve, do you have anything to share now, or do you want to wait for building updates?
I'll wait until building update, but as far as other construction issues, we'll talk about that when we get to the couple of bid discussions that we'll have later.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. I just have a couple of things. Westboro Connects Kindness Week is coming up. It's gonna be March 21st through March 27th, and there will be ideas for activities each day during Kindness Week. And Kindness Week is going to begin with a Kickoff to Kindness virtual event with the Ben's Bells Project on March 21st at 1:00 PM. So that's a virtual event. Space is limited to 300 registrants, so we need people to pre-register for that. And you can visit the Westboro Connects website at www.wespurroconnects.org to pre-register and see what's in store for Kindness Week coming up, starting March 21st. So I'm excited for that.
We released the flyers today, Kristin, so we're actually gonna start a big push this week, so just, we'll, we'll push it out at the end of the week, so, so parents that are listening, we'll push it through our own communication, so those links will come directly to you, because it's gonna be really spectacular.
Great, yeah, I did see an email went out from Westboro Connect. So if you're on their mailing list, you may have already gotten information about how to register for that kickoff event and just letting you know it's coming, so. But registration is open if people want to sign up for that now, and then we'll push it through the schools as well. Thank you. And then I just wanna let everyone know that the school committee continues to receive feedback from parents and caregivers, sharing their feelings and opinions about the models of instruction. And I just have two groups to recognize. I want to thank the members of the Superintendent's Advisory Council for continuing to gather feedback and questions from the schools and organizations that you represent. This has been very helpful to us. You are able to reach a much wider audience than we are and actually gather those questions. And some of you have been organizing them for us and passing them along, and it's just been really helpful for us to see the types of questions and where, you know, some blind spots might be of things that we need to address. And we also received a set of questions and feedback from remote-only families, so I want to thank Danielle Jordan for passing that along. She shared that with the superintendent and with me, and just really thank you again for staying in touch and passing along feedback. And again, I just want to thank everyone for reaching out, and your feedback is really important to us. So it's also important to stay up with these meetings and to read the emails that come through, because as state guidance is changing and we are moving towards more full-in-person learning, you get a lot of updates from the district and your schools. So it's really important to open those emails, even though you're getting a lot of them. There's a lot of information in there, and even in the news and notes that come out on Thursdays and Fridays, those are really important to take a look in there, too. So thanks, everybody. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Steve for some building project updates.
Well, as, as we're gonna talk about a little bit later, we got a couple of bids in, and we'll deal with those in detail, but the, the larger bid that we received, I'm trying to think, I guess it was just before the last meeting we had for the sprinkler system at Hastings came in, as we had hoped, less than what was anticipated, much closer to what the original engineer's estimate was for that work. And the total amount of, of that work will show up at town meeting, since the warrant was already published, you know, with a much larger amount, it'll, it'll appear quite a bit less than what was anticipated. So that's very good news. As far as fails construction goes. As far as Phil's Construction goes, they're actually doing maintenance, excuse me, masonry on the outside of the building on the lower tier. The north end, that's the far end from the street, is actually had work done. And the west side as well, which is difficult to see or impossible to see from the street. But masonry on the lower part of the facade is also beginning. With other work, the roof is now pronounced to be watertight and electrical conduit, et cetera, is installed in some areas of the, of the building and was offered for acceptance by the building department today, I believe. We have some concerns about where we are on the schedule. I mentioned at the last meeting that we were seeing some issues associated with certain vendors in terms of their delivery. And we will be discussing tomorrow at the committee's meeting, where are we on the critical path schedule for school starts this coming August? So, and also, I think I mentioned issues associated with sediment control on the project. We had a discussion with the Conservation Commission in regards to what we felt was an opportunity for the commission to perhaps issue a, a alternative method for doing sediment control based on some case law that occurred in New Amesbury, Massachusetts, based on the DEP ruling. The commission, however, chose to continue to assert its jurisdiction in regards to wetland and water control. And so, we are continuing with a very expensive sediment control design for the site, which at this point, that additional cost will be covered, we believe, by our contingency on the project. So, there are some things that hopefully warm weather will help us with, including a discussion that I had with the construction team today about being able to stabilize the open soil on the site, which is on the north side of the site, as soon as we don't need to work in that area anymore in order to try to minimize the amount of, of unanticipated costs associated with sediment control. So, I think within the next few weeks, particularly as the weather gets better, we'll be able to get a better read on where we are both on cost and schedule for the failed school. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Steve before we move on? All right.
I guess I have a quick
By the way, certain walkthroughs, if you make an appointment with Mary Ann Stetterd at the job at Phil's School, from time to time, she has walkthroughs in the building. If you use all the safety protocols, individuals are welcome to go have a look. But you do have to make an appointment with Mary Ann. Thank you.
So, I have a quick question and that is, by the next meeting, will we have a good sense of what kind of delay we're talking about and whether, you know, we have contingency plan, you know, for the next step? Or is it, do you think we're at that place, Steve?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to get an answer to that question tomorrow afternoon. And I guess the real question is, okay, if it's tending in the direction that I'm worried about, then what are we going to do about it? You know, what plans would Gilbane, our construction manager, have to make up time? And hopefully, those plans would not include additional cost to the project. So, you know, the opportunity to meet deadlines, as long as there's no real excuse caused by the owner relative to the contractor, then the contractor has to do what's necessary to hold their schedule, which might mean, you know, overtime work. But right now, everybody is all over the place inside that building because we have had a very aggressive schedule in the first place, partly caused by the fact that going to bid was delayed by virtue of issues associated with what the state had been telling us at the time. So, we were about a month late in executing the bids because of issues with, with the MSBA and the true award of the opportunity to go to bid. So, yeah, there's, I mean, as always in a large, complicated project like this, there's a lot of reasons why, but the issue with the committee, of course, is to make sure that the whys aren't going to cost us money and that, in fact, we get what we had paid for in the first place. And it's not an easy job as, as has been seen by all the other projects that happened in the town, the town hall, the fire department and, and the police station project as well. So far, knock on wood that we are able to control it. But, you know, I'll be able to tell you much better, I think, by the time of our next meeting or even by email between this meeting and the next.
Okay, thank you. No, that answers it. I think that's helpful, just to get a sense of, can it be, can you catch up? Can you, is it going to cost more money? Is it really going to affect the opening, those types of, you know, future questions?
Amber?
Yeah, I think with our experience, Lisa, in the other school buildings, that we, we know the certain buttons to push and people to talk to and people to keep informed so that, in fact, we're not surprised. Historically, we have been surprised but by different things each time. So, we have a collection of quote surprises, I guess, that we're now able to manage around. Not to say that there won't be a different one, but at least, you know, hindsight's good and a lot of people are aware of that, since we have a very similar team in construction this time as we did particularly at Gibbons. Nearly all the players are the same.
Yep, Amber, go ahead.
One of the things we discussed too, and I think Steve and I, and I'm a member of the committee as well, have looked at it certain times, the timing of having a small set of a member of the team come in and do a structured updated presentation for you with project photos and timeline update. And so, after Steve gets to a place as the chair where he feels like there's a good informative mid-year opportunity to come in and provide a more in-depth presentation to the public as well as to you as the board, we can work forward on that. So, I think we're close in that time, some of the school issues that we're facing with regard to managing kind of the ongoing changes taking place in schools have been displacing a lot of the normal updates. So, I'll coordinate with Steve and you on that, Kristen, and we'll get a team in here to give you guys a structured update to complement what Steve's been doing.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I would
Go ahead.
I would point out that, you know, there are cameras and photos that are available on the construction website, which also have time-lapse photography so that you can actually see what's been going on over, you know, over that period of time, you know, a month or two as things progress on the site.
Those videos are great. Thank you. And I know that as a project moves on like this, we're constantly adjusting and making new decisions around design and materials and things like that. So, it'll be great to kind of get an update on, you know, a more accurate vision of what the school and the space and the grounds and everything will look like. So, that'll be great, Amber. You and I can schedule an update for that and share those updated plans. Great. Next on the agenda is citizens' requests, but we don't have any of those tonight. So, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is our COVID-19 impact update, which has lots of agenda items underneath it. And we always have the data dashboard there for, you know, for school committee members to review. It's part of our website. And Amber, I think there were two communications that went out this week about cases for students. And so, I appreciate getting those updates and just, you know, staying mindful that COVID's still in, is in our community and we do have students still contracting COVID.
Yeah, and last night, if you happened to watch the Board of Health, they had a discussion that was surfaced by some parent questions and also just by changes of updates to the procedure regarding how we're quarantining. The Board of Health clarified that the circle of quarantine is utilizing DPH and CDC guidelines and that we'll want to minimize any quarantining while we stay within those safety guidelines so that we're not wanting to push home students that don't need to be pushed home. And so, continuing to keep those as tight as possible, but sticking within those guidelines. And they recommended at the close of the discussion that they saw no call for any changes to our protocols. So, for tonight, I'll dive in. We have a lot of updates for you. We try to pace these. You're going to be hearing from a variety of people. You'll be hearing from me, from Danielle, from Jack Foley and Pat Nash around parts of the Gibbons update. And then you'll hear from the social emotional team that's going to present. Roger Anderson will join us and Sherri Stevens will listen and provide some updates as well as needed. So, I'll start off by kicking off the fine arts update. We talked about this briefly. I just wanted to highlight a couple of items because there have been some questions that had come up regarding the FAQ document. So, I linked an update memo from the director of fine arts, Chris Martin, and I encourage you to take a look at that to kind of see up and coming events. It bulleted some kind of unique and important items. One, the TRIAM held its in-person ceremony to bring on new members. It was actually members from last year and this year. It went really well and they gave you the link. You can watch that ceremony from Westboro TV as well. What's on the horizon is the box you want to pay attention to if you read that memo. I think there's two that give you some really nice pieces. The third grade strength modified program will continue to come forward. Center Stage will have a spring drama production following COVID guidelines. We will have an acapella night outdoors. The band was practicing outside tonight under the lights. So, a range of things taking place. We will have the visual arts exhibit that's usually in-person live, but because we can't gather large numbers inside in terms of visitors to events such as that as of yet, we anticipate that that will be virtual and they're looking on that now. We will have Mr. WHS that is planning and coming forward. They'll announce how that will be presented this year. And there will be a range of culminating performances, either livestream, recorded or done in small group settings wherever possible. So, they are gearing up. I think the most exciting news, and I provided for you a sample of the kind of communications that our teachers are pushing out across district right now regarding the celebration that we can sing and how they're shipping their curriculum planning for that. I think those are the items that I wanted to call out specifically. The one other note that I think is important is there was a discussion around wanting to make sure that our remote program learners recognize that they're getting program that matches and equal in different structures to what we're providing in hybrids. We hired over sixteen positions across the district in order to open in the fall. And that was to allow us to have full-time competent and capable staff working in our remote model and then having long-term subs folding at the building level into different structured positions for the hybrid support because we wanted to make sure that we could have talented staff teaching in all of our programs. The remote program had seven full-time talented, really skilled teachers from the fine arts department in music and art, providing all of the programming to students in the remote. They have been consistent. We haven't had to change any of them. And they've actually been able to provide more live face time than in the hybrid setting where they're on a rotation schedule. So, there's been, I think highs and lows and benefits and changes on both sides of the program, those working in remote and those experiencing hybrid. And I think it's important that everybody realize that the year looks different for everybody in different versions. Our goal was to make sure you had strong faculty in all settings. So, I just wanted to let people know that when we did that hiring, it benefited fine arts for the remote and the hybrid setting. I would say I also wanted to give a shout out to WAFIA that just continues to really step up and provide a whole range of parent and group support to making sure that the year has been celebrated and recognized. And in Chris Martin's update, he had the link to the monthly updates that they're providing, which are really rich of a ray of things going on across district and really highlighting different seniors and different members of the fine arts department. So, good things ahead in fine arts. Do you have any questions or comments regarding fine arts before I move on? Okay. I for one, continue to look forward to the day where we're in full concert. Again, I miss them a lot. I'm going to turn it over to Daniel. Daniel's going to pick up two key aspects. He's going to give you the update on data which was requested by you guys and from some parents and questions regarding what was the switching taking place between hybrid and remote. So, Daniel's going to provide a brief update on that as well as an update on our progress for faculty to get vaccinated.
Okay, let me call up the first one. This is the data where we've asked parents between the kindergarten through grade six parents to give us their choices, whether they wanted to move from remote, if they're in the remote program to in-person, or if they're in the hybrid program. Given that we're getting rid of the hybrid program, do they want to move to remote? If they're not comfortable enough being in the hybrid program. So, let me share the screen to show you the data. And what you can see here is just, well, go down to the bottom. You can see the general pattern is like a two-to-one ratio here in that those moving
Sorry, could you make that a little bigger?
Make it larger.
Yeah.
Sure. It looks plenty big on my screen.
Not on mine.
There we go. A little better. Yeah, so down at the bottom, you can see sixty-three total requests to move from remote to in-person, whereas we have thirty-one requests to move from hybrid to remote. So, at each individual grade level, the numbers are really not that much, that great. They offset each other a bit, but like, you know, kindergarten, you can see nine are moving in, six are moving out, you know. In terms of changing this structure of like how many kids are in each classroom, that means there's a net difference of three, right? The difference between nine and six. So, it's not a big change for us in terms of throwing off. Our fear was we might get like, you know, huge differentials and then therefore class sizes would change and we'd have to make switches in terms of who the homeroom teachers are. So, again, you know, as you go down, first grade, the difference is six, ten and four, then twelve and five at grade two. So, it's comforting, you know, and just to keep in mind too that in, there's about three hundred students per grade level. About forty percent of our students at each grade level are remote. And so, you know, that's, we're talking, you know, across the grade levels here. These are very small numbers out of those, out of three hundred per grade level. Okay? Any questions on that data?
Thank you for sharing that. That's good to know. I know we were worried about class sizes changing too much in person, but it looks like it's very manageable. Because they'll be spread out, I mean, the elementary schools, it's spread out across all three schools. So, seems manageable.
Yep.
Quick one, a quick question, because I think there's misinformation about, out there about the percentage that were in hybrid that technically would be going into full in. And the reason I think there's misinformation is that, because when people start discussing middle school and high school, they seem to have different percentages. So, do you recall the percent, the average percentage in K through three versus four through six versus seven, eight versus nine through twelve?
Yeah, it's, high school's about ten percent. Middle school, Jack can correct me if I'm wrong, is somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five percent. And then it's forty percent K through, K through six. Jack, do I have about that, is that about right or is it thirty percent?
It's, I think seventh grade is twenty-eight and eighth grade is twenty-five.
Yeah, so, okay?
Those are the remote percentages, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jack. So, any other questions on that? So, let's look at the vaccination numbers. This is, gives you some indication of how incredibly eager our faculty are to get vaccinated. Is that, I mean, keep in mind that you're getting up before in the morning to get appointments. And let me adjust this. I know it's not looking right yet. My computer is being slow, however. I hear the hard drive churning.
So, while Danielle's pulling the numbers up, I was telling people we're entering the appointment. I had this text message to let me know that I could get in the queue to try to get an appointment. And I got the note that I could get in the queue like two minutes before we came into this meeting. So, I did let it go. After like getting up and looking at it and texting, so I'm back to zero, I guess, I'm supposed to again. But it is, it takes time and focus and effort to try to get an appointment. So, hopeful that some of those announcements that we can pre-book appointments would be helpful. So hopeful that some of those announcements that we can pre-book appointments would be helpful.
Yeah, and I feel like the opening up of CVS has really helped our teachers stay local so they don't feel like they have to drive to Gillette Stadium or anything like that. I know a lot of teachers have been able to stay local to get their appointments, so.
Yeah, so when did CBS open? Let's say was it a week ago?
Yeah, not even, yeah.
A week ago, we have four hundred of our employees have already gotten appointments and started their vaccination process. So that's four hundred of about, if you can count all in with coaches and such, that we have eight hundred employees. I don't have this, we don't have it broken out yet by, sorry, by teachers here versus other staff. But to have nearly half of our staff vaccinated with, you know, with appointments and in the vaccination process just shows you how eager they are to get vaccinated. This is broken out by school, but you know, it's not really worth going into the school by school numbers here. So.
That's great.
That's good.
And like Sarah said, there's, there's some special, there's going to be four days set aside for teachers on upcoming weekends. So only teachers will be able to get a point, be vaccinated.
Well, don't let me get started on when those dates are relative to when we're supposed to be opened up by the state, okay? Those dates are way too late. I'm sorry.
All right, let's keep moving, people.
Sorry, I brought it up.
Let's keep going. We're going to keep, we have a lot to cover tonight. I want to make sure we cover this, all right?
All right, so that was a great update. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm thrilled and we will continue to support each other getting appointments as quickly as possible. I'm feeling really good about it. I do agree with Daniel that all of us are disappointed in the ways that state has organized what they're doing. But we've tried to control our own destiny in the ways we can with our planning, with our faculty. And I'm immensely proud of the way they've dug in, but you know, Daniel is correct. So let's look at the timeline. I just want to take us into an overview and I want to begin to emphasize a couple of key details while he pulls up the timeline. I'm going to look at the roadmap.
Want me to go to the roadmap?
Yeah, I linked it to you there. Yeah, I linked it there for us. Just scroll down to the bottom so we can look at the timeline. I want to emphasize again that DESC continues to put out new regulations and oftentimes counterproductive to aspects of where we are in planning and other times in line. They released the other day in front of any information, again, going to superintendents or to districts, a series of changes that, you know, can be positive, can be confusing and can be complicated to then match to where we are. So I think these updates remain really essential. I'm going to step you through them and make sure that you know that I want to emphasize that faculty and the leadership team in Westboro have planned our return, working together to solve problems and to roadmap a way forward with our target goal of returning all students in this district before the end of the year. And we are on track well. We are right where these timeline notes put us and I have some additional updates. And on Friday, when I release this document again, along with the frequently asked questions, we will put another set of more finalized dates. I'll hit on some of them tonight and then we'll cover others. The guidelines have changed, obviously, our planning on Givens. And we're going to put a lot of focus on discussion for Givens tonight after we move through these other discussion points. More on that when we get to Givens. I do also anticipate that we will put out some changed updates on the trajectory of how we're phasing Fridays because the governor and the commissioner have acted on five full days in person. And the hours will require that we phase out those half days. We'll be talking about that tomorrow. Most of our days phase out to in-person really quickly after remote staying in place in the two early weeks for kindergarten. So we'll be updating all of that as part of the FAQ on Friday. But importantly, we need to come back to some of our leadership teams and labor board to kind of nail down process. So that will be an important update people should look for on Friday. I want to walk through the dates with you. So we were really excited to welcome back kindergarten. Daniel and I both spent time in classes. It was very celebratory and also very focused. And it came in to classes where teachers were drilling down on DRAs already, getting a look at students, doing writing, which they've been very, very anxious to see where students are. Singing, introducing each other to two kids that haven't seen each other other than Zoom. The whole array of celebratory and important steps and digging right into work. They are on target to then move to five full, they'll go to five days the week of the twenty-ninth. And then we'll update whether or not that's a full day or a half day after we nail down some details. But they start the week of the twenty-ninth with five days a week in person, with the Friday being adjusted after we kind of figure out where we are against the guidelines from the commissioner. That was exactly as we planned. On two, this coming Monday, the twenty-second, we will greet and return first graders for a full days. And the following week, they will return five days in person as well. We also then that week will be great, we will be welcoming on the twenty-ninth, second, third and fourth graders starting five days a week. We also then the following week are on track to bring in the fifth and sixth graders as planned at five days a week. All of that is as mapped out and in line with anything that's already come out from the state or in front of it. So I think one of the things we want to look at is the timeline on Givens. And I'm going to talk about that in a minute. You can see that we had moved from the initial release of mid-April to June to the hard start date of four, five, when we were going to be using the rotation that left us incorporating teamwork. And so that target date is going to shift. I'm going to talk about that in a second because we're literally twenty-four hours on punting where we dropped two weeks of planning and picked up the phase of planning we thought we would be doing later and pulled it to the front. So we'll talk more about that when we get to Givens. I want to look at these last two important target dates and talk about the high school. We have made steady progress and the high school faculty, faculty members on the planning team as well as their department head leadership working with admin have done a phenomenal job to pick up pacing on the two objective goals we gave them. They were going to be providing more synchronous learning, live contact, small group, cross-m Navy cohort, opportunities for students to be interacting and sharing work together during the away days at home work. Some teachers have already, after these initial discussions, started exploring and adding those ideas to their repertoire. By the end of next week, I anticipate a clean summary doc to you with examples of the range of ways that we expect classrooms to be connecting more. So you can see the ways that that will be happening and some targets for how often during the week students can anticipate that happening. That will lead to a more robust planning and academic gear up as we then anticipate that it works towards that second goal, which is the full return for in-person five days a week at the high school. We have been planning for it and thinking forward in it. We anticipate releasing a target date for that on Friday. We're right in line with other districts around us for an anticipated start date. If you look at my note which was released last week, when we were at school, actually two weeks now at school committee, mid to end of April, more in-person learning at the high school, we are on target for that. We will look at clarifying what level of return we will be able to achieve by that end of April benchmark. And I look forward to talking more tomorrow about that with Labor Board who've really brought forward a whole strand of really good ideas as well. And then we'll put out a frequently asked question and timeline update Friday. I think there's other important things to recognize. We really want to make sure that we're able to collapse the planning window for teachers so that as they move to five full days of instruction in person, when the half-day Fridays of preparation, which have kept their head above water for that disappear, kind of meshing those transitions together. So those are kind of some of the things that we're trying to figure out together in collaboration right now with the faculty. So that provides the update on timelines as of now. On target at this point to look at a full Westboro return of pre-K to twelve in this school year before the end of the school year and with a good substantive amount of learning time left in this district. So again, work that I feel is moving forward well and benchmarks with, I think, some of our colleagues that I'm meeting with regularly as well. We're on target with Huffington, Northboro, Southboro, Craft and Shrewsbury. All of our circles that are really parallel to many of the experiences that we're always trying to collaborate on. So our main focus tonight is going to turn towards looking at benchmarks and timelines for Givens and the way that we're going to move forward on that program. But before I shift off of this, do you have any questions or comments regarding the update on the timeline? These are dates we've been, you know, talking about and are currently implementing. But I just want to make sure if there's any questions we can clarify.
So I had, I just wanted to kind of confirm with you that this timeline is in alignment with what the Commissioner of Education just released yesterday in terms of the timeline that he has for K to S middle school and high school.
Yeah, we'll be ahead of that. I mean, I anticipate that we'll be ahead on any of his timelines, which is what we were committed to because the faculty wanted to benchmark all of our return with their planning and their recognition that this was something they wanted and were planning for, not driven by the commissioner, but by the school committee of Westboro as the authoritative body of the Westboro Public Schools. You and faculty are guiding the opening of this district.
Okay, thanks. I know, because I think in his guidance yesterday, the commissioner's guidance yesterday, there isn't even any dates about high school yet, so.
Well, he did the same thing. He didn't have any dates or, I'm not going to go down this path far, but it's important for people to remember, before we turned towards Givens, we had received no benchmark date on middle school, no guidance and no parameters. And then he announced in the document the opening and the parameters without letting anyone know. And on a very short timeline. So it's a good thing that our planning is where it was and we had both the teamwork stage and then a potential developing return before the end of the year that we've then rotated forward. And we'll talk about that when we let Jack and Pat walk you through where we are.
Yeah, no, I'm thankful for the planning. That's already happened. I think that we're in good shape as compared to some other districts.
I have a quick high school question. Is it anticipated that it would be staggered like per grade? Like, I don't know, I just heard in conversations too, not with you guys, but in general, like talk of maybe doing stuff for the seniors, trying to get the seniors back, just speculation, but just wanted to.
No, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And I want to always be respectful of those announcements and making sure. We are committed to all grades getting the attention they need and getting a good closure at school. That might have some staged pieces, but I think that right now the high school is planning forward to do a tighter return of all grades as possible so that we can maximize opportunities between now and the end of the year. But all of that has to be mapped out. It's very complex. I don't want to go down that level of discussion. I think tonight it's important to focus on Givens and to make sure that then, you know, we turn towards the appropriate updating. I know people want more information. We're very committed to celebratory and important closure with our seniors. When that time comes, we are looking at, we said, like modified celebrations, modified proms and dances and things that can happen. While we also look at academic closure and things that need to occur. Many of these things will be able to happen with a lot of normalcy by the end of the year, such as graduation, we're anticipating in its, you know, perfect trajectory of timing. It wouldn't need to be delayed. Things like that are beginning to map out. And I think first we need to return Givens and get them staged in. And the high school is kind of right behind in timeline planning. I'll have at our next school committee the appropriate updates on all of that.
Hi Amber, can you provide more details on that line where on three twenty-nine, more synchronous connection during school with student every day is nine through twelve?
Sure, sure. So as I said at the start of the highlight for this discussion, by the end of next week, you can anticipate a summary document coming out which will provide examples of the ways faculty are increasing the connection for live contact, synchronous learning contact and small group Navy cohort crossing work together as they provide more opportunities for students in the away home days to be engaged and in more live work. That will be implemented that week if not before, but the document will come out. What is this, what day is today? Today is the tenth. So by the end of next week, we'll put out a summary document from the planning committee at the high school that's working with department heads, provide a clean update to families on what that can look like and how that will happen. We'll also provide, as I said, target dates or targets for like how often that should be occurring so that, you know, both parents and students can anticipate what do the days, what do the days look like between now when I return to in-person? And what you're going to see is a ramp up of, you know, some more rigor and more connection as we build that stamina piece with students staging towards a return to in-person.
These are live connections, right, at the school?
Those will be, there will be a range of options. It will be, some of them will look at streaming, some are zooming. Like for example, they will be zooming students in. They might be setting up cross-zooms between Navy and cohort groups to do more work together. It'll be a more rotational planning that allows them to cover more curriculum if they can do some streaming opportunities. But it'll offer a range of ways and that's the thing that we've been clear about. We're not going to say, okay, you're all high-flexing, we're all doing this. We're all, we're going to provide, and the faculty is looking at a kind of a whole criteria of ways they can do that, some of which are already at play in many classrooms. And they want to basically create a more standardized set of opportunities for students that echo what they, what they've got going on across faculties. So I imagine that document will share the ways that that synchronous work is happening.
Okay, thanks.
They ordered, and I'm certainly happy to include you more in depth. I mean, whether we can meet and go through that maybe tomorrow. They've ordered some new pilot things they want. They've got some tools that they think, and each faculty team or different group had different thoughts based upon their department. So, you know, I think we can provide you, again, as school committee, you have access to the planning template. It was kind of developing it, but it needs to come out from the planning committee next week.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
I have a quick question of synchronous learning as well. Because it's already starting to happen in certain classes. And my understanding is that it's not mandatory. Is that true that in middle school and high school, the synchronous learning is not mandatory for students to attend that in-person synchronous live streaming, you know, period? And will it be required in the future where when teachers choose to do some type of live streaming, will it be mandatory for students to attend those live streaming classes? Because my understanding is it isn't quite there yet. So in the planning process.
Yeah. I want to be clear, I want to be clear that, you know, any work that faculty provides that's part of daily instructional planning for the class is required, as is attendance in Zoom meetings and turning in work in the hybrid away day. But that echoes back to the circle of discussions we've been having all the way along, which is students struggle to do the work when they're away, whether it's live or not. And even teachers that are present, and they've certainly, teachers have certainly, you know, circulated this as part of the discussion, which is even in classes where some of that is being offered, students aren't accessing it. So it returns us to this original discussion and struggle. The structure and framework of being in person, five days a week in school, creates the rigor, continuity, connection and need to deliver public education effectively. And that is why we are looking to return students in person. Because we have very dedicated, very committed students who perform with attendance at a very high level across all of our grades and they're struggling. And some of them don't take advantage of that. I don't want to characterize anything without data. I'm not comfortable taking a comment and generalizing into our students not participating because I hear just as often is that they do and they would and they want more opportunities. I think both things are true. I think it's very important that we as a group recognize that our faculty would see benefits in increasing those opportunities, but it does increase stress for kids and it locks their schedule down. So those are the things that have gotten in the way of, you know, what is part of the hybrid experience where some students, you know, like the flexibility and are very happy in the hybrid model to organize their academics the day. to organize their academics the day in a way that works for them and do math when they want and English when they want versus what the schedule says for when they need to log in and do those things. And when you start increasing the synchronous commitment, they have to lock into that schedule. So there, there's certainly an array of students who don't prefer that. And so there's those and then those that might struggle with that. So across the array of opportunities, we are layering it in because we took the feedback from everyone that more opportunities for this, you know, are a part of this trajectory of where we are in the year. And I think the options that faculty will put forward will be responsive to the students they know, the classes they have and what they've found works, which is why we didn't define a set plan. I think faculty are kind of varying it based upon the class, the requirement and the ways that they think they can connect with students. So I think we'll see a range of choices and then a range of responses that will be hopefully productive matches, you know, to what, to what students will respond to. But any work we post, any day, any way we deliver it is required in the hybrid model.
Thank you.
All right. Yep, definitely. Okay, so that's a pretty more full high school update. I know it just kind of, I know it just breeds more questions and I understand that. I want to be clear that I'm not avoiding answering questions or that I don't want to give details or deadlines. The focus tonight is on Givens and then what we want to do is move more fully into then a very similar targeted and clear update on high school moving forward. But I hope you carry away that you hear, planning is in place, things are moving forward, and we will return students for, for the close of this year as soon as possible. Okay. Any other questions? Those are perfect update questions. Push on those things.
I have a comment more than a question.
Okay.
I've heard from other school districts that, you know, to, during the April timeframe, when the weather gets better, there are plans to use tents as an option for outside. Is there any thought process from the administration on, on that to think about putting up tents?
So, yeah, you'll certainly hear tonight as part of our presentation, maybe we should push forward, but we have tents as part of the planning for Givens High School and Mill Pond. We used tents in the fall, smaller ones. We're looking at more substantive tents that will carry us through the course of this year. You're probably looking at about $100,000 worth of tenting that you'll see occur between now and the end of the year. Hopefully covered by COVID funds. We just ordered one for Mill Pond because they're first in the queue. I think we mentioned that one when we updated you on Mill Pond and it will be a part of their cycle. We've already pushed forward this week, actually end of last week to the tent. People are coming tomorrow to meet at Givens and the high school where we're looking at adding a layer of tents that will cover opportunities to provide flex instruction.
Thank you.
Yeah, no question. Keep them coming. Okay. Other questions? These are good. Is this targeted? Okay. A lot of updates will go into, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think, I think we're ready to move on to the Givens plan. And just reminding everyone that on Friday, a lot of this will be summarized and frequently asked questions, including more updates. So that'll be pushed out to everybody on Friday.
And again, I think as we move forward, these are great questions and this is why school committee, you're bringing forward those that are coming to you. Keep them coming. It's good to answer them live like this, so I do appreciate them. And I think they help us clarify. I know I'm on my serious voice and I'm like, I don't mean that you like shouldn't ask the questions. Let me clarify. Because I feel like I'm trying to make sure that we're providing clear and succinct answers for people, you know, so they know that, that those plans are in place. But, but I, I welcome every single question you want to push forward. I do also want to acknowledge that, again, I'll meet with the superintendent's advisory, which is all the parent, president, group leaders and other groups, boosters, others. Forward your questions to them. They've been asking for them. They've been bringing forward great discussion. And I meet with them Friday morning and it helps me then clean up and push the frequently asked questions document by the end of the day. Sometimes I have to roll to Saturday if there's a lot of discussion there because I just need time to then write the answers. But it's helpful to me and to us as a district, and people are often saying to us, how can we help you? It's helpful if you direct those questions to those leaders or you, you know, wait until Friday when we answer those. Givens people, you're going to get a survey probably by Friday that will let you answer questions and ask questions around the planning we'll talk about tonight. And it's easier for us to then make sure that our answer isn't just an email to one person who asks it. It's to all of you so you all get the same information. So, you know, I think today I had 460 email that I'm trying to push down. And it's hard when we're trying to personalize answering people's questions because we care that you hear that we're not going to ignore your email. But it is really productive. We can push those answers into these bigger documents and the larger meetings so that everybody gets a fair and equitable update, you know, not just individual emails. So that's super helpful as well. So let's shift gears and unpack Givens. So I want to open the Givens document. Daniel, are you going to shift in there? Perfect. Okay. Thank you. So you're going to hear from Dana and I. We're going to take the introduction here and then we're going to have Pat and, and Jack take you through the planning. So we shifted gears. Those people that saw the Commissioner's release know that the hybrid support model won't count time-wise. And so we are abandoning the teamwork design. We anticipated it would serve us in a strong use until we got guidance on middle school. We had none until he made his announcement and we had no deadlines. And we're already within three feet in many classrooms at Givens, just in the hybrid model. We had already started secondary planning for what it would look like post-vaccination to be able to return students at Givens. We're rotating that planning forward and in the last, you're going to look at planning that's basically happened in the last 24 hours. So Jack, Pat, Dana and I have put as much focused time as possible to fleshing out that design. We also were able to pull from some of the planning that was taking place at the high school and how they're thinking about their return. And it incorporated into the update that Jack and Pat will provide for you. It's important to understand that the state has a waiver process. We are not going to apply for it. The timelines don't match up. The challenges match up space-wise at Givens. I think it's important to reiterate that. If we didn't feel we had needed teamwork, we never would have developed it as a plan. So as you look at the, the complications tonight, abandoning that model, you know, is logical. It, it just means that we have to shift towards the problem solving for all in at Givens and, and that list is what we'll step you through now. So Dana will talk about the existing conditions that we solved initially with some of this transition planning for teamwork. And this is what we'll now tackle and what we present to you for planning.
Thank you. So I mean, just to reiterate, the teamwork's proposition was meant to be an interim plan to help with the fact that, you know, kids were struggling at home and needed social emotional kind of attention. Needed to come in, get some guided instruction, get an opportunity to socialize with their, their, you know, their other students. But in the state's requirement that we bring students in person is now obviously taking center stage. Just for context, the Givens school has the largest population it's ever had because of the bulge in a couple of grade levels that are currently at Givens. So having its enrollment at 624 is substantially higher than, I've been in the district now for my 11th year. We haven't had anything close to that in the Givens school. So we've got to, you know, sort of handle the, the three-foot rule at the same time, which is three foot between desks, at the same time as handling having some substantially larger than normal class sizes. So what we have in the document here is a summary of how, how the Cardinal, the Navy, the hybrid and all that stack up. The, the most relevant problematic issue is that 184 class periods of 190, like or sections of classes, I should say, of 190 sections that are running have more than the 18 students that we could fit in a classroom going by the three-foot rule. So that means close to 50% of the sections are causing us to come up with a alternative way to structure those 84 class sections so that we can safely have our students in school, in person. And Jack and, and Pat have done a great job of, of picking this apart and figuring out how we could do this safely. And that's, they're going to get into details of that soon. But, you know, just so you know, you know, we've measured our square footage. We know what that, we've gone into every classroom and we put the desks at three feet apart and we know exactly how many kids we can fit in each space. And so we've maximized the space at Givens by taking some of our remote teachers and sending them. They're going to be teaching remotely rather than having them sitting in a classroom with no students in front of them. We said, we need you to go home and teach from home, which in the beginning of the year, we wanted them to be in the school so they could be with their colleagues. And that is an ideal situation for being able to cross-fertilize with their colleagues. But now that we need the space, we've made some changes in our staffing. So one of the things that you'll see that Pat and Jack are going to get into is how they're thinking of what we call swing spaces. And those are spaces that are not typically used for class instruction in the way that Jack and Pat are, are, are thinking of it. So how we're going to use the library, the gym, the auditorium and the cafeteria differently than we have in the past. So Amber, I think I'm going to turn it back to you for this guiding, planning goals.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. Yeah. And for people that are wondering about that spacing information, those numbers, Jack and Pat will return more to it when they go into detail with you kind of around their, their initial ideas. We had some guiding, planning principles that we've used and these actually echo much of what we've used to guide the educational planning along the way. We know based upon what you'll hear from Roger and Kim Tynan, that continuity and consistency and routine are the things that maintain social emotional health, academic progress and the wellness of both faculty and students as we work within the school year. So maintaining as much stability as possible in the current classroom schedule and teachers and faculty as possible has been our guiding, planning anchor. So we're not looking to break apart classes, create new teams. A lot of what the Commissioner marketed as a way to cope with middle school was to kind of break apart schedules, change it all up totally, bring back remote teachers or layer in remote and like lots of stuff that is just not the way Westboro and high performing districts function. We believe in that continuity and connection, the academic continuity and the relationship between students that they've shared for the year as well as their faculty. So I think many of the districts and all of the colleagues that I'm talking to in our neighboring districts work from that premise. So we are keeping as much stability as possible. We also then equally feel very strongly about maintaining the safety procedures and protocols of the five core mitigating strategies. I want to echo that while we face challenges and we're going to talk about the challenges, we have confidence we can and will return students on the timeline that we dictate in a way that will be safe and healthy and viable for them to be at Givens between now and the end of the year, full in person, five days a week. So I articulate our confidence while I also want you to understand the mechanics of what it's going to take for us to pull it off. All right. So the, the vast burden of implementation, actually it's kind of good news. It depends on who you're talking to, but it's kind of good news because the vast burden of implementation actually sits on the administration right now. All of the work that the principals are doing, custodial teams, the anchor organization, Kelly organizing for tents from buildings and grounds. It's really an admin push while teachers are continuing to work on the academics of increasing their synchronous work and being connected with kids and, and ramping up their academic work and the things they need to do. But their schedule has remained, you know, fairly, the continuity through this time will, will be stabilizing for teachers. And we need to focus on admin getting this stuff done in many, many layers. So as we look at those goals, I just, I think it's important to recognize that we want to limit complex transitions of movement during the day. We want to provide lots of opportunities for there to be a sense of stability. We also really feel that's important to continue to emphasize how deeply committed we are to the success of those families that have been in the remote model, that have had a structure that have worked for them. They've had things that haven't worked for them. We can see that there are things that haven't worked for hybrid families. We've seen that there are losses and gains on both sides. But I want to be clear that the implementation of the remote model is one we're equally committed to. We're not going to move faculty around and collapse schedules or ask a remote teacher to come in and teach live while she streams to her remote class suddenly, which was again, a recommendation from the Commissioner. That's not a sound recommendation for those students in remote and it's not for those students in the hybrid as well. Lastly, I want to be clear that one of our other major, major commitments is to delivering special education services effectively with supported transitions and strong communication and recognition that students that have some unique learning needs might require some unique interventions and support as they transition at this time of year. And we are also very committed to that level of work and planning. Here's our anticipated timeline. The Commissioner said kind of like Wednesday, Thursday, the 28th. Right now, our committed opening date will be Monday, April 26th, after we return from vacation. That will be all seventh and eighth graders returning to five full days in person. Based on planning, we may look to the week of the 12th. If we can create some flexible opportunities to have a softer return that would allow us to get routines in place, check protocols, welcome students back. It really is dependent upon the benchmarks that we hit in terms of admin planning. Can we get the tents? Can we organize the lunches? Can we get the bus schedules collapsed and organized? There is just an immense amount of logistical work that happens. And so moving as quickly as we can, you have two target dates that are there for discussion. A committed date to return on the 26th and a potential some of use of that week before vacation based upon our progress and we'll keep you updated on that as we move forward. So those are the pieces that I wanted to frame for you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jack and Pat. And they're going to share with you highlights around how that planning is looking for moving in that direction. So Pat and Jack, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks Amber. I guess I want to echo some of the things that have been mentioned so far. And one of them is the, the quick turnaround, the pivot that we've been able to do on this. Amber called me yesterday when Pat and I were at a bus duty at quarter or three, sharing the information that the Commissioner had just released some updated information and that we needed to quickly pivot. And Pat, Daniel, Amber and myself have, you know, really quickly turned around and adapted a lot of the plans that we had had for our TeamWorks initiative. And all throughout the, throughout the TeamWorks initiative and planning, as Amber and Dana had mentioned, we fully anticipated that we were going back to school. So throughout the, throughout the day today, several colleagues had kind of bumped up and said, hey, aren't you mad that, you know, after all that planning that you did for TeamWorks, you suddenly have to do this? No, no, we, we fully anticipated that we were going to be doing this. And for us, it's nice to have the information sooner rather than the day before we were going to be launching it to TeamWorks. I think it was just two days ago that Lisa Christman and Daniel and I were at TeamWorks doing an initial kind of feasibility tour. So in quick pivot and, you know, we're ready to go. We're, we're very, very excited at the opportunity of having, having all the kids back. So the full, I included the full text of the Commissioner's announcement here because initially I got a little bit confused with a shortened version of the brief and the longer text of the brief because they use the word remote in two different contexts to describe different things and it's a little bit confusing. So I really want everybody to, to understand, and again echoing what Amber and Daniel have said, that the full return to school for Givens Middle School is for our hybrid families. I included that link to the Commissioner's announcement because it's very, very clear that families. that families who have chosen to stay in remote can stay remote through the remainder of the year. The commissioner does use language that hybrid learning and remote learning are, are no longer count towards time and learning, but that does not count towards the families in the, the Westboro Learning Program that have chosen to do so since the beginning of the year. And he provided us with the date of April twenty-second, April twenty-eighth of, of being up and running. That's the Wednesday after April bacon, as Amber had mentioned. Hopefully we can, we can get in a little bit ahead of that if we get up and running and we have all of our ducks in a row and ready to go. So the three foot spacing, and it is three foot seat edge, two seat edge in all of our classrooms. And one of the primary drivers for the, the teamwork's planning was that, you know, Givens has small classrooms, small-ish classrooms. Very nice and very well constructed and beautiful classrooms, but they're on the smaller side. So we have, you know, around six hundred, you know, to six hundred to, you know, on the eight, eight hundred is kind of the bigger side for us. And at the beginning of the year, we were actively using the state calculator to determine, you know, appropriate social distancing. And unlike some of our sister schools, we didn't have the capacity to do a, to a, do a full six-foot social distancing in a lot of our, in almost all of our classrooms. So almost every single classroom at Givens Middle School has been set up at three foot, two, three foot seat edge to seat edge distancing in the classes. And that has worked really well for us over, over the course of the year. And that is what we will replicate for the guidance of, of our new program. You see here also that the, the commissioner's definition of full-time in time learning. So we will be going back for a minimum of five, five and a half hours a day, four, five days a week. So the, the Fridays that have been so, so valuable for our planning, for our staff will be condensed and will back in, back in school and kind of returning to normalcy in which we are very, very much looking forward to. Again, echoing the, the data that Daniel shared with us a little while ago, the staff is continuing to push through with vaccinations and lots of folks are very, very excited about getting that vaccination process and getting, getting that second shot under the belt. And, you know, there is a, there's a tangible sense of relief for folks after they get that, get their vaccinations. So Givens is a middle school and middle schools can be very challenging. And thank God we have a super talented assistant principal in Mr. Nash. We have a very, very robust scheduling offerings for our kids, but the matrix to frame all of that in is exceptionally rigid. So we have pockets of very large classes floating throughout our building. So we have pockets of classes that are in the high twenties, you know, from twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine kids. And that's because of the robust course offerings that we provide to the kids set in a middle school context. So as you know, and just as a, you know, a, a three-minute quick refresher, in middle school, the kids are separated into seven different teams. Each team is, you know, we want to have equally balanced teams such that, you know, you don't have all the high flyers on one side and all the, you know, the kids that need support on the other side. So we try to have balanced teams. And every student on every team has an opportunity to get all of their requests. So we offer three types of language, French, Spanish and Mandarin. We have three levels of math in eighth grade. We have two levels of math in seventh grade. We have a fantastic music program and we offer small group instrumentation for band chorus and orchestra. You know, so combining all of those facets together creates bubbles of kids throughout the program, you know, for a very simplistic example. We offer Mandarin. We have one Mandarin class in seventh grade and one Mandarin class in eighth grade. So if hypothetically, there were thirty students in that Mandarin class, that would be one class that would travel together throughout the course of the schedule. And those thirty students would need to be together oftentimes as they rotate from, and in middle school, the kids change classes every single period, you know? And there's a, there's a slight mix every single period as they, as they go throughout the schedule. So we have, so one of the presenting problems for us is that we have smallish classes and pockets of very big class sizes, you know? So we have a cap on, you know, for safety's sake, we have a, we have a firm cap on the number of seats that we can have in a classroom when they're set up socially distanced three foot by three foot seat edge to seat edge. Typically that's around fifteen, sixteen, you know, we can probably squeeze in some more chairs safely, you know, as long as everything is, you know, by taking out a little bit more equipment, we can probably squeeze in some more chairs. But that's the issue that we're running into right now in terms of welcoming all of our students back. We have some classes, we have honors math classes of twenty-seven, you know? If we can only fit eighteen class, eighteen students in that class of twenty-seven, we need to have an effective plan for dealing with the overload of students. And that's what we're going to be describing here. The planning that we have in place to support the class sizes here at Givens. So we have three basic options that we want to work with to deal with our larger class sizes. You know, we can A relocate the whole class, you know, take those twenty-seven or twenty-eight kids and move them to a different space. And that's as Amber had mentioned, you know, we're going to utilize the swing spaces. And that was a term from construction, by the way, Amber, that we used oftentimes. And we're actually, we're, we are actually going to be taking some of the pages out of our construction handbook and, you know, rededicating the library to a couple of classrooms. We can use our cafeteria for a couple of classrooms. We can use our auditorium for a couple of classrooms. And to Mr. Nadyu's point, you know, we're going, we're actively investigating tents, you know? So Kelly Giacapello immediately reached out to the tent contractor, gave Pat a call today and let him know, you've got to get on the phone with this guy today. You know, we need, we need him here as soon as possible such that we can ensure that we get a quote in, you know, we have, because it's going to be a limited resource in the very, very near future. So we're going to be employing tents where appropriate. So additionally, so one, one option is moving the whole class. Sometimes that's not going to work. A second option in a smaller class, so if I have nineteen chairs and twenty-one kids, there are going to be some classes where it's going to be okay to allow a couple of kids to work in the, work in the hallway supervised. This happens on a regular basis already where, where small groups of kids do go out to work on a project in the hallway to get a little bit of, to get, get a little bit of quiet time. That happens fairly frequently as, as teachers are doing project-based learning. So that's part B in terms of how do we mitigate the, the class sizes? And C is taking a page out of the high school book. We will be able to rotate small groups of kids out of a class into a remote space, into one of our swing spaces. We anticipate having a tutor at that swing space to receive the students. And we are also strongly encouraging some synchronous work and that our teachers are, are already, a lot of our teachers are already moving in that direction, some synchronous work from the classroom to, you know, the library if, so the student can catch up as much as possible. So those are the three, three strategies that we're going to work on when we are dealing with the larger class sizes. And Amber has asked and we have, you know, pulled together a period by period determination of how many classes that we have are in this range and how are we going to target them? And we're going to work with our teachers to figure out, okay, how many seats do we actually have? Let's re-measure, let's get our yardsticks out and re-measure every single classroom and every single seat to ensure that we can safely seat as many students as possible. We're also going to be working with those teachers to ensure, to figure out that, okay, if you have a class of twenty-one and you have nineteen seats, you know, how often can you, you know, use the strategy of having a couple of kids in the hallway? How often, and really tailoring it to the activities that are going on in class, do you need to relocate to a swing space, you know, either, you know, tent one, tent two, library or cafeteria? Or, you know, do we need to get into, you know, a rotation of moving some of those kids out? So working with our teachers in the classrooms to figure out classroom by classroom, you know, how many seats there are and what, what strategy, what mitigation strategy we can implement to best support them is going to be, you know, the work that we have in front of us to, you know, have very clear communication with our colleagues around that. As I mentioned, we're probably going to do two classes in the caf, two in the auditorium, two in the library, probably two, two in the gym. And that's going to, you know, the nice thing about this model is that we're, you know, getting into the nicer weather such that our PE classes can be outside for a, a larger component of, of the day for their activities. And it's going to make the, the tents a very much of a viable option for us. So I think I covered a bunch of that. Pat, did I miss anything?
No, I thought that sounded great. You know, we definitely have some options too where sometimes a rooms, you know, room next door could be open. So we could have some overflow there, which I think is a great option, especially for our science classrooms, you know, you're doing a lab and stuff like that. We have some of them that are linked, so I think that would be a great option as well. But it was, it was really energizing to see our, our maintenance staff, custodial staff, our teachers, you know, reorganizing rooms and things of that nature and really excited about this. So, you know, the, you know, the commissioner's news is, is really excited our, our faculty about, you know, receiving, you know, our students back. So it was, it was great to see the energy in the building today.
And looking at the sheet that we pulled together today, Pat, I think we had a, you know, about ten classes, you know, per period, you know, maybe six, six, eight, ten classes per period that are going to be impacted by this. And we still need to kind of go back and have a really fine tooth comb on that and work with our teachers to figure out just how many, how many seats can we have safely in every single class? You know, so if it's, if it's twenty-two, then we should be okay.
I think one of the things too that is important to highlight is that there's advantages here with the fact that one, there is warmer weather, we can incorporate the tenting and that comes into play because I think it's important for people to remember you were using the auditorium, the cafeteria and other swing spaces to spread out for lunch and other types of, of like arrival and dismissal and things. You'll be layering in and classes that would rotate into some of those spaces in different periods. So then the tents allow us to, to create space for lunch breaks as well. Two, two things about that as well that are also advantageous. Because students, you know, if you picture your child's schedule, everybody wants to understand it totally reasonably from their child's perspective. So if a child is moving through their schedule in the day and then in the week, they might have a smattering of class experiences based upon how Jack was describing this. Or they might be in a breakout group, where they might have one class that's larger, where they might have to vie with the teacher to let them be the persons in the hallway. It's going to be the most popular class setting available. You know, I think you often see that then in a student's experience, we can also, the teams can focus on this as Jack was explaining to me today, that you can look at an individual's schedule and say, huh, you know, student here has three experiences where they're in a class that would have to have some mitigation. Let's make sure this kid only has one class where that happens. Make a decision which one it's going to be and we don't want three of his class experiences disrupted. You know, so they can both personalize it, pay attention, but then also use variety. We're not going to take one science class that would happen every day in a kid's science schedule and put it in the auditorium if other kids are in labs. So that type of thoughtful balancing is the level of detail we want to bring to it so that there's quality educational work and, and I, those conversations are already happening. Jack and Pat have already pushed out the schedule to look at it by class period and then we'll apply those mitigations that they've developed already. You know, like Jack, the other example you used when I was with you today was Joe Barca was saying, this works perfectly for me. I'm starting Romeo and Juliet. I put them into groups. I, I often have a group in the hallway working anyway, so it creates the flexibility for him to say, I want my class together. I got it. If I've got two extra kids, I can totally rotate it. So that's the type of innovation planning that faculty will use. And then Jack and Pat are applying the organizational management to kind of do all these logistics.
That's a great reminder and a fantastic example, Amber. Thank you for, for sharing that. Because I really wanted to address, because being in the hallway sounds like it's really egregious, but it is a typical strategy that we use in the middle school for kids to do small group work. And it is supervised and it is monitored, you know? So it's not like they're, you know, just kind of wandering around. Typically the kids are just sitting right outside of the classroom door, teachers in the doorway monitoring them. They're on their Chromebooks, they're working on a group project, they're working on Romeo and Juliet, they're working on a literature circle, you know? So it's a very typical thing to see as you're walking down the hall in our school. And the other thing I just wanted to touch on that Pat reminded me about was lunch. You know, currently our lunches are set up six by six by regulation because obviously the kids have to have their mask off to eat, you know? And at that point, everyone has to be in a six by six seating zone. Right now, we're broken out into grade levels, seventh grade is in the cafeteria and student desks and eighth grade is in the auditorium. The auditorium is set up six by six as well and the students have, also have an opportunity to sit on the stage. Once we welcome in both cohorts at the same time, we're going to double the number of students that are in the building. And again, you know, so we have a total of enrollment of about six hundred and thirty kids. Cardinal cohort has two hundred and five, Navy cohort has two hundred and fifteen. So, you know, there is going to be some room in the building to spread out a little bit. But we do have those higher pockets of concentration because of our schedule, you know? Even though the remote kids are still remote, you know, and we have sent those teachers home, the classrooms are open, but we still have organized classes that are moving through the building that have high, higher concentrations in them. So having the warm weather, and we really experienced this in the fall and the kids really enjoyed it circling back to lunch. The ability for kids to eat out in the courtyard was fantastic in the fall. And fortunately the snow is melting, you know, things should be drying up and the kids will be going up very soon. We actually had kids out over the past couple of days, sitting on the dry pavement to enjoy the sunshine. So we will be using the tents.
Yeah, and I think, Jack, you know, the skill of what you learned during construction for the daily remediation and problem solving is what this is going to take. So it feels familiar, if not welcome from that standpoint. So, you know, you're going to need to get more floor mats because they're tracking things in because they're outside more and it's going to be rainy in the spring and let's hope the weather stays in our favor. So this is the logistical step. I'll take transportation working with that team. So, you know, everybody's game on to make this happen and it will. And it will happen with the same kind of smooth, well-managed implementation that you see from us each year. I think you should, if you're a Givens family listening to this, have confidence that the implementation will go well and that our commitment to keeping your child's schedule normal comes from strong educational grounding and a team that kind of gets what it takes to both cover curriculum and have strong relationships. So why don't we do this? I'm caught in another fact that one of the other important updates is going to come from the social emotional learning team site. They have about a fifteen-minute update. So we're right on time, Kristen. I think we should open it up for questions on Givens from, from, from you guys.
Yeah, I think we're at that point for, for some questions and I think we understand that we may not get all the answers because the, the planning is still happening. So, but I will, Sarah, I know you had some questions. I'll open it up to you first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foley and Mr. Nash for, first of all, for the teamwork's planning. I was very excited about that for, for the kids, the social emotional aspects of that was going to be phenomenal. I know you guys put so much time in that, so I totally appreciate that. But also appreciate the fact that you can switch on a dime. So we appreciate that too. I just had a question about when you were saying multiple strategies to manage the numbers. Can you just explain C again? Do you just use a teacher to map out? Because the asynchronous?
The cohort piece? So, so, so first strategy is move the whole class. The second strategy for a larger class is to move a portion of the kids to a different location. Those, that portion of the kids will be rotated on a regular basis. So if I have twenty-five students in the class and I have twenty chairs, a different five students would be rotated out on a regular basis. Those students would go to a known place and there would be a tutor ready to receive them to work on the class material and we would have, we're going to have an expectation that that's going to be synchronous work for the kids.
I think the other piece of that, Sarah, it looks at this model of, I guess our general approach as we've been mapping forward again over several weeks and thinking forward to these days, that it's easiest to tackle large problems like this by just taking the strand that's a problem. So looking at the fact both at the high school and at Givens, if we said, okay, if seventy percent of our schedule works, let's take, let's solve the problem of the thirty percent as opposed to reinventing everything. And that is, you know, again, it's a skill set that's administrative to pull that forward. And so we basically are going to mitigate the overages. And so kind of a, a drop block problem solving method lets us maintain the teacher, the schedule, the relationship, the work. problem-solving method lets us maintain the teacher, the schedule, the relationship, the work and, and the schedule and the class and everything in terms of spacing. So I think that design will work effectively. Um, and it means that if the student's in class five days a week, one time, they might fall through a rotation where they work in a library with a tutor on the work of the class, but it means that you keep that class, that teacher, that rotation and the spacing works. So it's kind of a, um, a unique intervention that I think allows for the experience to be minimal in terms of impact for a student each week um while also providing a way for us to um stabilize the schedule and the space. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sorry. I guess my question was with C was um the word synchronous, because we've all gotten used to that as like maybe like I'm looking at a computer and the teacher's in the other room. Look, is it more, is it that too? That could be like streaming in from the library or is it?
That's our goal. That's a goal, that's a goal to be able to get to that point.
Okay. So yeah, so it could be used if, if it all works.
Yeah, I know. And again, like I think we, I were at a place of, you know, um, all of this guy's is like twenty-four hours old. So I don't want to have to walk back stuff. Uh, so I want to be clear here. Just like I said around the high school, when Raghu asked very thoughtful questions about what is the synchronous going to look like at the high school? You know, if, if you're in a drop block for your math class, if it's a large math class and one day across the span of the week, you have to rotate out to a library setting where there's a tutor supporting you with your five student friends that go. If it's purposeful because there's a lecture or something that has to happen or lesson that requires it, where synchronous is important, we will work towards that and have them zoom in or do something that works. But if they're in the middle of something else and they want to work problems and they don't need to do that, I just don't want to get ten emails from people that say, wait, my child's drop lock wasn't synchronous today. So I think we just have to be, make sure that people are so tired. I want to make sure that we're like this complete honesty of clarity. And I think I don't also want to panic Givens teachers who aren't even at twenty-four hours around this new model to feel like we've said things that they don't understand yet. So in honesty and care to both sides, I think that's the model that will work and it makes sense. They're already using a variety of, you know, zooming and posting and that will work, but I just don't want to nail down anybody saying, you said this. Um, because I, I think that, that would be not, not a hundred percent accurate yet. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold with flexibility. What we're guaranteeing you is we're returning to Givens and we're going to make it work. And I think there will be robust learning if you're in that drop block. Um, and I think we have to wait and see. It's easier to respond to people's individual questions based upon the teacher individually answering those questions based upon the class and what it is, right? So I think, I think it will vary. Um, you know, each teacher is going to look at who's down doing what work in that drop block, how many kids does it impact and how does it flow into their planning? Because they're returning to, you know, a non-hybrid based planning, so they're, they're going to have a need to kind of make some additional switches in, in the work they're doing. So all good news. Again, I just want to make sure that people don't step away from tonight and, and feel they heard one thing when we need more time to get the details worked out. That was a great question. Can we grab any others?
I have a comment. And my comment is between where we started a few weeks ago and where we are today, I have said to others who have written to me um that if there's a problem to solve, Jack's going to do it.
Thanks, Steve.
I, I had forgotten, I guess, all the things that we learned while we were uh remodeling Givens School. And you brought them back to mind in, in terms of the ability that we had with a quarter of the classrooms under construction as to how we solve those problems. Um, you don't have to tell me how you're going to do it because I can pretty much visualize the fact that we had done it already once. And with some assets, i.e. additional teachers if you need them, with additional resources such as tents, uh with the ability of using the various spaces that aren't normally considered for use in a school, in that school, you will have solved this problem, I'm sure, to the satisfaction of the parents, including those who had some real concerns about what we were going to do at the Teamworks. And so I'm just going to sit back and watch how you solve this problem because I've got the greatest faith in you being able to do what you have to do uh in order to meet the state guidelines, as you always have for every other problem and question that's come up, at least in my experience as a member of the school committee. And so I'm actually suggesting to the parents who are listening that in fact, this will work out fine, that your kids will get uh the best education they can under the circumstances and perhaps even better. So give Jack a chance to solve your problems and concerns. And uh obviously, we're all listening to, to those of you who have concerns and we'll see that they get resolved. Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steven. Um, I know Lisa, it looks like you have some questions, so.
I have a question about um the eighty-four of a hundred and ninety weekly class sections are over um eighteen students. And then the number that you showed greater than twenty students by period was very different number. I'm just curious how, I, I'm sure there's a logical explanation um where one is like forty-seven classes over twenty, but there are a hundred and ninety weekly class sections. There are eighty-four of those that are over eighteen. So what does that mean?
That was just a split between the number of classes at eighteen kids. So the number at eighteen was one and then the number up closer to twenty uh was a separate one.
Oh.
So the second, the second cutoff was twenty. Uh, the first cutoff was eighteen.
That makes sense. And I, I'd also want to commend you on an unbelievable pivot. And, and you know, it does make sense to me that this had to have been going through your mind, you know, prior to today, that the process of getting full in had to be somewhere in your thought process as you were planning, you know, Givens Satellite. So it is really an extraordinary task that you went from one to another and the plan that you've laid out before us seems incredibly uh although fast, really some extraordinary work by you and Pat and whoever else was in this planning process. It really is, you know, I think people wondered about lunch. You, you got tents, you're going to make it work, six by six, making it work. It's three foot. You're going to make it work three foot and that there, it will be safe and that we're keeping our safety protocols in place that, you know, we're going to move forward on the numbers that we have, which are pretty, you know, it's really an extraordinary task that you've put together in a matter of twenty-four hours. And I get that there's so much more work to be done and keep, everyone, please be patient. And um, so thank you so much. As I said at the beginning in my reports, I think that what you and Pat have done uh is extraordinary, even in the whole creative process that you went from one, you know, a day ago where we're looking at the space and by the next, you have a complete, you know, turn. So thank you so much. I, I just think this is the, this is the way the gratitude should be towards right now is where you and Pat are making it work and figuring out a way for our, everyone to be state, safe, including our teachers and staff and all of our students. And um just amazing. So thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. You know, just to, to be absolutely fair and transparent, we had a significant amount of help and the um the collegiality, the can-do attitude, uh, the positive response uh from the planning teams like Roger and Kim on the social emotional stuff, like Cindy Crowley, Claudette Barrett, um, a whole host of people um to, you know, as we started going down the path for Teamworks and trying to, you know, replicate entire campus over there um was fantastic. And we were just able to turn a lot of that information that we had already gleaned uh into the planning that we had for uh for Givens and as Steve, uh, so uh eloquently reminded us, you know, you know, we've been down this path before at Givens uh five years ago when we were giving up ten classrooms at a time. Uh, so, you know, we've kind of been there before a little bit.
Great job, great job.
Raghu, I just wanted to check in with you to see if you had any questions.
No, it's, it's a great job, uh, Mr. Foley. Uh, it was, it was a great job. Thank you so much.
Great. And um, I just wanted to say that I, um, Lisa and I did have an opportunity to tour the Teamworks facility and hear from Jack and Daniel kind of what they were envisioning there. And I think it would have been awesome. I honestly think that as a temporary measure, it would have been great. And we never said that it was going to be full in-person learning at Teamworks. It was sort of, it was going to become the at-home day at Teamworks. So it was getting kids out of their house and responding to the needs that we heard from parents. Kids are feeling isolated. They can't get the work done. We were going to give them opportunities to be with others, to have support, to get their work done, have some fun, play some games, get some exercise. It was going to be amazing. And yesterday, when we got the guidance from Desi and Amber called Jack and Jack's immediate response was, okay, got it. We've got to cancel some meetings that are going to, supposed to happen at Teamworks. Cancel that transportation tour. Cancel this. Let's go. We've got this. And it was just a can-do attitude from the beginning. So um, I have no doubt that it's going to be successful to get these kids back. Um, and I do understand that it is going to take, you know, a week or two to figure out this planning. So having kids return after vacation break, you know, would make sense to me in thinking about the amount of planning you have to do. And if you can get them back before then, great, but just knowing that, you know, you'll have it in place and it depends on tents and, and other things getting set up. So um, I appreciate all the effort that went into Teamworks. I think it would have been awesome. This is going to be even better and um, I just appreciate your, your can-do attitude and the whole team at Givens.
Thanks, Amber.
Just to clarify, they're not doing Teamworks anymore.
Correct.
Exactly.
Okay.
Cancel that plan. No one should arrive at Teamworks in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, so I think Jack and Pat, you've given us a lot to think about. Um, there's a lot to digest here and um, as Amber had said before, we're going to be asking families to please make a list of your questions and funnel them through um the parent group, parents um that have been helping us. So we've got Liz over there at Givens and um, you know, she's been helping us a lot with questions. So funnel questions that way. Know on Friday, you're getting more information. Givens parents will be getting a survey to make a decision about five days in person at Givens or remaining in your remote-only program. And um, we, it, remember, it's, this is twenty-four hours old. So we're, more details will be coming. Um, we want to share this, you know, it's not really first draft thinking, it's sort of like fourth draft thinking. We want to share it with parents before it's finalized so we can get feedback. You can kind of, we can be transparent and you can see what's happening behind the scenes to bring kids back. So um, I think Amber, if it's okay with you, we could let Jack and Pat, I would say, you know, get ready.
Yeah, we can.
Wind down the night, but I know they're going to go to work.
Thank you very much, you guys, for attending. I would love for you to be able to get some off-screen time. So thank you for joining us and um, I really appreciate it. We'll talk to you tomorrow while we have planning blocks. It's good.
Thank you.
Take care now.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
And um, yeah, I think this would be a great time to um turn it over to Sheri and Roger to are here to share with us, yeah, about social emotional learning. And um, what um a few of us have realized on the school committee is we've been talking to some families about social emotional learning and we've been using that term and we've had a few of our parent friends say to us, what, what's social emotional learning? Like what, what is that? Like I, I kind of get it, but I don't know what it looks like in the middle school or what does that look like in second grade? So I'm glad you guys are here to give us an update. So welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Sheri and Sheri, uh, as Director uh of Student Services, you know, oversees wide dimensions of this work across districts. And I think one of the first things that we did when, literally within the first week of closing um, a year ago, as we hit the anniversary on Saturday, um, I called Roger and we called Kim Tynan. And I asked them to step forward and become the leadership benchmark for managing what was going to be emotional crisis. And at that time, I called Sheri, I said, this is what I'm thinking. I'm just going to pitch this to those two, let them team up and become the anchor for emotional and social care for faculty, families and kids during this crisis. I couldn't be happier with the response of the two of them. And Sheri has done an incredible job to oversee their work and support them. So I'm going to turn it over to her and let them try and update.
Thank you, Amber. Um, Roger and I are delighted to be here um with you this evening, committee. We're very, I'm sorry that Kim couldn't join us this evening, but she's certainly with us in spirit. Um, I think what you'll hear tonight is, you know, when we started talking about preparing for tonight, we, we acknowledged right away that like we have a, we've been on a, a journey and we have a great story to share. And certainly I want to call to your attention that there's a very detailed like timeline memo for the last three years in terms of where we've been on this journey um with the implementation of social emotional learning and wellness and attention to mental health in the district, which, you know, I hope you will find um sort of like well-written chapters um uh to bring us uh forward. And um, so I hope that you will have time to kind of look at that document. We'll share it out also to our families and I'll link it to the Student Services webpage. Um, but I really want to move us forward with conversation tonight and Roger's going to take point on that. You know, that really speaks to the level of continuity and care that both our faculty and our students have been receiving and sort of where we will be with our, our forward thinking as we're welcoming students back more fully. Um, so without further introduction, Roger, I'll send it over to you.
Thanks, Sheri. Thanks, everybody, for giving us a few minutes of your time tonight. Um, we're going to look at sort of the way that we've approached all the work that's been done since we had to run into this pandemic almost exactly a year ago today, um, with the lens of social emotional learning and mental health. So we're going to kind of partner those two. They're not the same thing, but we've kept them both in our lenses as we've developed curriculum and as we've developed the new models of learning that we had to go through. Um, and social emotional learning is basically um the ability of people to apply the skills to live the life the way they want to live it. The, the key five components that Castle describes for us, I'll just give you this information and then we'll share our story, are self-awareness, self-management, relationship skills, social awareness and responsible decision-making. And all five of those can be applied to any task, any challenge, um, coming to school, solving problems, living daily life. Um, for adults, for kids, for schools, for families. Um, anywhere you go, these skills are universally applicable and, you know, often allow people to function really well. Um, the, kind of the story that I would like to paint for you is that, you know, a year ago, we, we moved into um, remote learning and immediately we looked at the potential impacts of that on our students' mental health and looked at the education, their education around social and emotional learning as a key piece to their success. Um, and as we moved into the summertime, we put tremendous resources to making sure that whatever um platforms, whatever structures, whatever methodologies and models we built for the fall, that our students would be supported and able to function well in them. And, you know, with community, uh committees of well over a hundred teachers, administrators, we built a platform in the fall that we felt was as robust with the information that we had um and ready to go. And SEL skills were present from minute one. Um, it's really important that, that there are some specific SEL initiatives, but it was an absolute priority for the first five weeks in the fall that our students uh were educated, supported in their transition to the new models of learning. And we did the best we could to set it up. And then along the way, we had, we shifted our resources to meet whatever the needs that were presented to us were. So at certain milestones like the end of the quarter or the end of the trimester, as we collected data on student grades, as we collected survey information, we shifted our resources and continued to focus in on what was the need. The roles of many of our counselors shifted from some of their typical roles to um more tier-two and tier-three intervention that specifically met the needs of many of our students who were struggling. We began to set up programs to bring some of our students back more days a week because we knew based on the information we had that their mental health was at risk. Um, we continued to train our teachers. Uh, we continued to train our uh school counselors and our psychologists to be able to meet the needs um that this pandemic presented to us. Um, you noticed in the fall that we shifted things and then again, as we got into the halfway through the year, at the end of semester one in January, we continued to shift the way we were using our resources to really target the mental health of our students. And we began to bring on board, even though, you know, SEL was present in every single classroom at every And we began to bring on board, even though, you know, SEL was present in every single classroom at every single grade level from minute one that the kids came back, we continued to push even more formal structures such as crew, um, the SEL uh, moments at the high school, the second step program at the elementaries, which was implemented all along, but continued to be strengthened. Um, and now you're seeing um, as, you know, different models are going to be moved and are being implemented as our kindergartners have come back this week. Um, there's very few people in the world that are better at delivering SEL than kindergarten teachers. That's sort of what they do. You know, they take these people who really, you know, have a great variety of wonderful experiences prior to the time they arrive with us and then they, they put them together and they teach them how to interact and they teach them how to self-manage and they teach them how to face challenges and how to work through those. And so they've been extremely mindful and very forward planning, knowing that we were coming back to full class sizes. And that will continue, you know, that will continue with, with the first and second and third graders in the progression and then our mil- mil pond kids. And in the design of the work that, you know, Jack and Pat just shared with you at Gibbons Middle School, all of their teachers will recognize and understand that the return of students is a significant event. It's a, it's in many ways a very positive event and we are certainly very excited about it, but it's one that is not to be taken lightly. And, you know, while many of us may wish that the pandemic were over and that returning kids to school would simply solve things, we as schools, as teachers, as parents, as a community, need to remain vigilant that this is a major change in our kids' life. And even positive changes are still changes. And so while many of our kids are excited to get back, we recognize that we need to continue the high, high level of care in partnership with our families and in partnership with the community. Um, we have some uh, you know, events coming up as we know we're transitioning back. We have a parent series that's sort of laid out for you on the third page of the document there with uh, Kim Tyne and Dr. Kim Kuziak and Kara Presley from Youth and Family Services working together, um, you know, with my department to deliver some real hands-on skills of how parents can help, you know, their children manage now that we're a year into, you know, a global pandemic. And as they return to school, what are the things that you can specifically do to support your child in transitioning really well? Uh, things like routines, as Amber mentioned, things like connections and opportunities and validation. And we're gonna be really clear with movement breaks and, and how they can stay physically active and physically well. So there's a lot of planning on that. We've got a, a young adult program coming on at the end of the month with recent graduates um, working to share stories of hope, access to support and de-stigmatizing mental health. Um, so you should see by the end of next week, some advertising on that. And we think that's gonna be a great program. Um, we continue to train our teachers. A, a number of our teachers went through um, continued work in trauma-informed classroom practices. A number of our counselors have continued to be trained that way. And we recognize that, you know, this is really an ongoing task. And as we move um, really excitedly to the return of students, the social emotional piece needs to be embraced by all teachers. And it really was embraced and delivered in a, at an extraordinary level through the fall and has continued to, to be done. And then in places where we thought we had the best structure possible, but recognize that, you know, some of our students just weren't succeeding in that way, we've continued to pivot and move resources and, you know, um, with your great support, hire the people that we need to manage to help our students do the best that they can do. And I think, you know, clearly the return to the classroom, all the research supports that that's the best place that they can be. And we're gonna be really mindful about what that experience looks like because many of our kids come from, you know, different environments. Um, they've been separated. There will be kids who haven't seen each other all year except on screens and now they're gonna get to be together. And that's wonderful. And there are also some challenges that our really, really strong teaching staff and our counselors and all the support people and the administration are going to be mindfully setting up, you know, practices and structures and lessons that will allow their social emotional well-being to be a key piece. Because we know when our kids are in a place where they feel safe at school, they can learn. And so we wanna ensure that with all the transition going on, that our, our students have that opportunity. So I think that's, you know, kind of the piece. I, I, I do wanna reiterate that, you know, it's, it's a partnership. In any individual student's case, it is a partnership between the parents and the school and the student. The student needs to be a participant in their own rescue sometimes. And, and we work really hard to develop that skill in the thirteen years that they're with us. And then in a broader scope, with the well-being of everyone, you know, we need to keep an eye on our teachers. We need to keep an eye on our administrators. We need to keep an eye on you guys who are up late at night, you know, answering calls and supporting people. And that really is another three, three-legged stool, as my friend Bill Lanain this morning, you know, so accurately pointed out, between the community, the schools and the families. And everybody's gotta hold their peace and, you know, we're really excited about the opportunity coming forward and um, you know, we're, we're excited about the, the planning that we've done to get to this point. And then we know it's not gonna stop either. So we're, we're kinda, just kinda painting the picture for you now, knowing that there's still great work to be done, but we are, you know, very excited about the task and the opportunity. So I think I threw a whole lot. This is typically my, my nature when I get to join you guys is I just throw a whole bunch of stuff out of the things that we're doing, because I think it's really important that you know. And Kim Tyne has been invaluable in a partnership with me. This year, we have connected with Youth and Family Services. Kara Presley has been, you know, a tremendous ally for us and our community, creating support and programming and opportunities. So you know, i- it's really important that this is, this is not just my work. A- Amber and Daniel are true champions of this and Sherri supports, you know, some of the stretching and reaching that we do to try to do the best that we can for kids. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or, you know, entertain thoughts and ideas.
Yeah, I just wanna comment too, Roger, like um, great um, synopsis of where we are. But some of the work, I think, appears and maybe feels like a little more invisible because it's so embedded and ingrained in our culture now. I mean, it's just part of our normalized sort of curriculum, classroom activities in life. And then you have some branches, you know, that grow off of that, such as the crew, you know, sort of expedition at the middle school and then more intentional work at the high school, you know, moving forward. So it's just always like how we're looking to extend our work. And so I appreciate the comment of, you know, from families and parents about looking for sort of some greater definition. But it's not something that we've done, like a lot of good probably marketing or public relations around because it's just like, we're so intent on the work and it's just happening organically each day in classrooms. But we can certainly do better with that. And I think in the future, you know, put out some communication, some newsletters from counselors, school psychs, teachers, that kind of blend where we are with social emotional learning resources and mental health. And I'll be doing more in-depth presentation on um, April seventh. So, you know, we can talk, you know, more in-depth then, but certainly, you know, we're open to classes. And I think it was really, you know, fun that you covered the district, Roger. And I think if you really wanna see SEL like in an exciting moment, you wanna see three-year-olds learning about it at the preschool as well. I mean, it's just like, there's a really fun and natural component for that pre-K-A-K teacher for sure. But I think the district and our faculty have embraced and just done phenomenal work in a time of like profound sort of experience and trauma through COVID to really embrace that as a key benchmark for our district. So.
Yeah, I just, I think it's a great point, Sherri. I just wanna enhance that a little bit more because I think we know that sometimes people who are experiencing personal stress as students in particular will often say, well, I got what I needed, but I'm worried other people aren't. Cause there's this abstracted anxiety and fear and worry that they're like, well, somebody reached out to me, but how would I have known to do that? And, and that's like almost a, a seamless example of what embedded SEL work looks like, which is we have embedded protocols and support the networks where kids reach out to us and, and students help students and faculty are watching kids. And oftentimes it feels very seamless that a faculty member reaches out and says, this is the targeted support I think you need. Or we, they, you, you know, you're getting a text from a past teacher and then something happens. And, and oftentimes students will say, well, that was like, it almost feels accidental, which is kind of this sense of, well, I wanna make sure people know how to get that help, which is again, a beautiful response from both parents and students. And I think we can do a better job of sometimes illustrating those protocols back. But I think in this time of so much away from human time, much of it is very much invisible. But I think there's a very strong, I, I mean, I've worked in lots of districts. I've worked in Weston. I've worked in Newton. I've worked in Wellesley. I've worked in a lot of districts. This faculty is very skilled at connecting, embedding it, making it feel invisible. But they are so deeply committed to our students that, you know, if someone's in crisis, I actually get a text as well. And the network kicks in. And if somebody's struggling, parent network, it, it's really, I think, a testament to the design of what Westboro is as a community and the kind of parents we have and the kind of students we have. And so I think that this network this year has been seamless in so many ways. Um, to connect with kids who need that and faculty and families. So just a note that I, I do realize this is a good time for an update because I often feel that um, it can be unseen.
Um, so I'll open it up to questions or comments. Rego, did you have something you wanted to say? I saw you unmuted, so.
Yes, um, part of it was answered by Amber. So I was wondering, um, you know, uh, when kids come back to school, um, getting them help um, i- is crucial when they need it. But recognizing who needs help is also crucial. Hmm, some kids may need more help than others. So, so trying to, trying to use their program to recognize uh, and, and it was partly hand- answered by Amber. And always there's a peer who could reach out and say, hey, my friend needs help here or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can certainly speak to that. I think in all of our schools, there are structures in place and groups that are looking at the students from a number, a, a variety of lenses. Um, and opportunities for them to receive help, but also opportunities for peers, for teachers to identify a student that they are concerned about. That's in place in every single school in, in our district. And the administrators are extraordinarily adept at taking that information and then engaging in a process that moves forward the resources that are directly targeted to supporting that student. Um, I will also say that, you know, in the survey data that we get for our middle schoolers and our high schoolers, the vast majority of them feel very safe at school. They feel connected to an adult that is a non-parent at our schools and that they feel safe in sharing, you know, important things. And I think we've worked very hard over the past decade plus to de-stigmify, de- I'm losing my vo- my word there.
Stigmatize, yeah.
De-stigmatize, thank you. Uh, mental health. So even, e- even in our schools, our, our kids are willing to talk to each other about it, which I think ten to fifteen years ago, it was fairly taboo. And so now a student is able to raise their hand in a class and ask, you know, about it or, or talk to a friend and get support. And that's a culture that we've worked very hard to build here. So it's absolutely in place. It's, it's um, something we can never drop our, our vigilance about. Um, and you're absolutely right. And so we look forward to continuing to try to meet the needs of each individual student in a targeted way that allows them to succeed.
As a follow-up, um, do you think post-pandemic, when kids written, uh, written back to schools, the signals that you used to trigger before the pandemic has changed to, 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 for post-pandemic, you know, when kids written from this, it's, it's situation's different? So is there an updated signals to look for where kids may need help?
So I think just as we, you know, we worked with a group out of Brookline called Bright, um, as we transitioned into school this year, we trained both our middle school and our high school staff, um, hundreds of them um, on ways to look for and support mental health. Um, that now that we were in the pandemic and, and we've continued to train and, and look for different signs and signals, um, we're talking about ways to look at training students to be able to peer, um, you know, see that, like sort of mental health first aid for students. Um, and as we shift into next year, it certainly is gonna be something that we're gonna look to collect data, um, identify who is struggling and, and meet their needs then. I, I think we, one of the great things, and you saw it today, in twenty-four hours, the Westboro Public Schools can adapt pretty quickly with a plan. Um, we just need to, you know, stay vigilant and, and keep on top of it and have a culture where um, the people who need the help are willing to speak up about it and access it.
Thank you.
I, I would add to that, um, we, uh, as, as a district, um, about, I guess at the, last summer, we joined the Massachusetts School Mental Health Consortium. And John Crocker, who's uh, recognized as a leader throughout the um, state uh, in, in helping school districts think about, he's the leader of the consortium, think about uh, their students' mental health and how best to support um, teachers and, and counselors in reaching out to students has been contracted with us this year and has been working closely with all of our counselors, um, providing in-service education. Um, so uh, Sherri and, and Roger and Kim Tyne have been in close, close relationship with John Crocker. And, you know, I think that um, you know, there should be, they should be commended in, in the efforts that they're doing. And um, he's helping us put in place screening protocols and mechanisms, um, sharpening our uh, perspective and how we can catch early signs of uh, mental health. Uh, you know, crises that our kids might be experiencing. So just wanted to add that in.
Thank you, Daniel.
I just, I just had um, two groups that I'm, I know that you guys have, have thought about too, but I just um, didn't wanna not mention them are um, remote student, students that will be returning um, and melding in with um, you know, the other kids, whether some of them do it sooner this year or um, next year and then fall. And then also um, seniors, I know from talking to Kyla and um, some parents and a few other seniors too, they've missed out, you know, on a lot this year, like everyone has. And um, just those little bonding moments and things like that. So those are two groups I just wanted to mention and see what your thoughts are about those two.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can share that we've already been in, in meetings looking at planning for next year, recognizing that we're gonna have two potentially very divergent groups of students, you know, coming back together. And um, again, it's something that the culture uh, of our schools and the culture of each individual school um, has to be able to manage and handle. And then certainly our seniors this year, who we recognize have had a, a, a senior year that doesn't necessarily resemble the typical one in any way, shape or form. Um, we, I, I was part of discussions today at the high school, looking at identifying ways to um, you know, find the milestones that are often there uh, as kids go through and, and look forward to and expect. And some of the ceremonies and celebrations, um, and finding ways to do that, that are both safe and really honor, you know, the work that our seniors have done to, you know, survive this, but also to achieve everything they've done in, in, you know, by twelfth grade in, in high school. And so yeah, the, the conversations for next year are already going on and we're sort of knee-deep into working on the ways that we're gonna be able to have the remainder of the time that our seniors have be the best it can be as, as the sun comes out a little more. Um, and it gets a little warmer and the opportunities we have to support them and recognize them moving toward, you know, ideally an, an outstanding graduation opportunity for them.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say like, I mean, in the darkest part of this, if we push back, I think six months, well, they all feel dark. But um, we started wishing and thinking about what it would be to end the year with our seniors with us, with our children here back, our classes in place. We wanted that closure and we knew that it was a huge part of what we wanted to work toward in our thinking and our preparation because so much of the school experience is about that closure and the recognition, the celebration, as well as those students who need a lot of support around those closures and transitions. So really essential at every grade level, but I do think that to see a trajectory forward where through the end of April, May and June, we're, we're in schools is something we can be excited and celebrate. You can feel it in our faculty. You can feel the energy. You can feel the relief as they're getting vaccinated and the weather is improving and opportunities are starting to be outlined for them as well because they've been looking for what is the next step on our guidance and our planning, working with us on it, but it is reassuring to them. And they want this kind of closure for their students. And so I think there's a lot of continued good communication ahead. We know that we wanna push out um, some more organized and detailed communications for high school around celebration and closure and the highlights that will bring a sense of, of excitement while we also then wanna release the plans for their next stage of transition. Um, you saw we could make headway. We're in a good place with Gibbons. We'll turn right around and anchor high school because it's the same kind of can-do team. Um, so I feel really good about where we are. We've also, to Roger's point, So I feel really good about where we are. We've also, to Roger's point, already looked at needing to think about extra layers of emotional support when kids are returning in these first couple of weeks. And so, you know, this is how Roger and Kim have worked. They've pulled together materials and guidance and areas of highlight and screeners and tips and push those out. You know, they pushed out stuff to kindergarten, you know, they're gonna push out stuff to first grade. They're they're supporting the faculty preparing. So I think, um, I love it with them layering in the parent support as well. So, um, good things ahead.
So I just wanted to comment, um, because many people ask whether we ever use our parents for their expertise. And in this area, we actually do. There is a school council, as in SEL, made up of parents, and they are professionals. The majority are school psychologists, therapists, counselors. It's quite an extraordinary array of people in this group who are guiding feedback to the district and how to communicate out to parents, which is really one of the areas you just talked about, Sheri. And, you know, I think it really is pushing along the lines of that it's really important that as it's being integrated and over the past three plus years, that it will also be integrated with families. That we think it's really important that families start to have the the uh the tools and the skills to be able to share and, you know, contribute to integrating it at home with uh language and really aligning what they're doing at school with what you're doing at home. So that is sort of the council's plan is to get it to that place and Kim Tynan is heading up some of that. It also, if if you haven't been paying attention to your eighth grade in health class, the curriculum is completely altered to accommodate SEL learning. I've been listening and I think that's probably happening in ninth grade too in health class. And so I think what, I think the one thing that maybe hasn't been communicated enough is to the families that are struggling. The students that are struggling so much and don't recognize the resources that our school system has must take the, if you're seeing things at home that they're not seeing at school, it is really important to reach out to their teachers and their counselors to let them know what you're seeing at home so that the school can support your child at school. And so when people wonder what resources do we have, they just aren't aware that we've added resources to deal with this period of time that is excruciatingly painful for so many students. And unfortunately, can our support services keep up with the pandemic effect, you know, on our, that are affecting our students? And certainly there is no greater push that's happening than from our support services, whether it's with Sheri Stevens and Roger and Kim Tynan leading this front. But it is being integrated in all aspects for, you know, K through 12. And although you may not see it, it really is happening. And there are more and more support on whether it's, you know, getting your child to see the school psychologist or recognizing that they just may simply not know. Reach out, reach out, reach out, I say. And at the same time, you're going to receive a communication that talks about Wellness Parent Series of workshops that are coming. And that, you know, each one will sort of be focusing on a new, a different aspect of social emotional learning. And so we're really hitting in this great direction. I wanted to just thank Roger, Sheri and Kim. You know, this is extraordinary work that's been happening and has really been driving so much of what's happening this year. And I I thank you for even having the foundation in place. Because if, I can't even imagine what this year would have looked like if the foundation hadn't been there and how much it's grown and how much it will continue to help our students as we move forward. So, thank you. And parents, look out for the communication because it's it's showing the the road that they've taken and where we're headed. And I'm sure it will continue as, you know, we go on. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you so much to Roger and Sheri and to Kim and all this work. And I'm I'm excited about the Wellness Parent Series. I think that's going to land in our laps at the perfect time when we are trying to think about, you know, this new phase of our lives in this pandemic, our new phases moving into full in-person school. Our communities will be opening back up and sort of what's that going to look like and sound like? And how can we support our students, our children, our families, our friends with this transition? So encourage everyone to sign up for those. I'm assuming those will be virtual events, Roger.
Yeah, they will. Yep, yep. And, uh, you know, there's community wellness guides that have been developed this year as well that we haven't mentioned. But it, you know, at the schools, we take it really seriously and we're proud to be a part of the community of care for each of the students in our district.
Right. And I think it's it's invisible because it it's just part of good teaching these days. Part of being an excellent skilled educator is paying attention to this while you're teaching academics and doing it seamlessly. So our teachers are really good at that. So thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time to come share with us tonight and we will hear from you again, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Happy to be here. Thank you all.
I think, um, you know, we also had very early on, you guys, Westboro Connects was was you staged it. This is the next stage, but we partnered with people in the community to provide this. One of the large, really essential parts that Westboro Connects provides is they had workshops early on and supports, and then the wellness guides were part of also youth and family services. Because we've, working with Roger and Kim and Roger in particular, created the the networking to help support and care proudly for youth and family services. They have been pushing and reaching out. It's not all schools. We we are collaborative partners. As Bill Laney said, the three, you know, the three legs of the same stool. And I think we've collaborated to make sure that there's not stuff just coming from schools, but out in our community. And it's gone, you know, I think they've done tremendous work as well. Thank you guys very, very much. Um, we always kick you off, you can go home and have some downtime. So thank you very much for joining us. So you're on our home stretch here. I'm going to keep us moving forward. One of the other important updates we had tonight was pool testing. Are you comfortable with me moving forward?
Yeah, just had a question. Um, I know that, um, we had gotten in our school committee packet the update from Sheri and Roger and Kim in writing, all the things that Roger kind of reviewed with us tonight. And so is that something we'll link into frequently asked questions or will?
Yeah, yep, we'll share it. I think it will go out and frequently asked questions will also then Sheri has another update on the year where she'll come back and we'll also, you know, keep pushing that out.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yep. So we can move on to pool testing.
Great. Okay, so I'll have Daniel open up the notation in a minute. But just as an introduction, we've continued to move forward with the bid opening today for options for pool testing. I think in terms of action tonight, what's important to talk through is that as a district, we need to move in the direction of making a final decision on whether or not pool testing will serve the purpose of supporting us moving forward between now and the end of the year. We had several, I think we had eight, nine, nine bids that came in that came in on the right time and with the initial qualification. You can see a wide array of costs. Low bidder is JMC Analytics. That is the same company that Truesberry is using and North Borough Southborough have used successfully. And they meet the guiding parameters of much of the draft of what we had hoped to achieve in terms of the way we were comfortable moving forward with pool testing, such that it didn't slow down instruction. Here we are in the middle of another major, major transition that impacts teachers and administrators. And layering in another organizational management piece is an important decision for us. We need to believe it brings strong value added to us. We're very committed to doing that if it does. And we want to make sure that we make sound decisions. So the first step is to have the bid. What I'm thinking about next step that I want to walk through with you before I would ask for kind of a motion for for action. I anticipate, after talking with the safety committee last week, again, one of another tiered groups, and we had also preliminarily met with the board of health before we put the bid out. So we worked with two anchor groups, board of health providing guidance, the nurses providing guidance, and then the safety committee. So we put the bid out. What we decided across those three groups, again, board of health and safety committee and nursing staff, is that we should push a survey to parents and faculty end of this week, probably Friday, as we answer the other questions on these bids. We need to call references. We need to read the bids in depth. The nursing staff's going to have to look at them and see, do they meet the qualifications or the criteria? So they get a couple of days to pull together whether or not, you know, we do have, we do have actually a successful bid match with the low bidder. It's not just the lowest number. There's other criteria. We need to do the legwork on those criteria. And at the same time, we believe it's advantageous, after time of the safety committee, to push out a targeted survey to all families and ask for their commitment to participate in pool testing and get a hard number of people that see themselves moving forward to participate in pool testing if we launch the initiative. One of the things that's concerning that that led to us wanting to get a lockdown from parents to say, yes, my second grader will participate in pool testing weekly, or it offered. And as faculty, how many faculty want to continue participating in pool testing when we see the escalation of the vaccine, the vaccination rate amongst those staff? We want to check our numbers again. Where we were several weeks ago when we put the bid out is different from where we are now, both with infection rate, with vaccination, and with people's general sense of interest in kind of this level of checking. Several of the districts that we looked to in the beginning to provide guidance to us are finding a pretty rapid decline in participation in their pool testing. And they feel that it's not giving them necessarily the data they need to serve the purpose of, you know, meaningful benchmarking of safety. So what I'd like to do is push the survey out and let parents and faculty dictate giving us concrete information. From there, I would take that back and I would meet with the board of health and ask for their final recommendation with those numbers, which is, here it is by grade level, the interest in faculty and families to indicate that they will participate in pool testing. What's your feeling and final guidance around that, helping us accurately benchmark medically enough that it serves a purpose to move forward? And I would take that data from the recommendation and confirmation from board of health back to safety committee and look towards, you know, faculty's continued interest in it being part of our reopening. So those are the steps that I think we would need to do across the next several days. And it would allow us to make a final decision and award the contract if those two mesh together. The board of health feels advantageous around certain circumstances and would encourage us to move forward. We get enough good pool testing data to make it worthy and we award the contract. So what I'm asking of you is an action that would basically support. I think I actually pulled it up here so I could give you the structure of the motion hopefully. Let's see if I did. Might not have. I think what we need is a motion that would authorize the awarding of the bid by director of finance. If the bid meets the successful criteria and allow me to award the contract and to move forward if we get an affirmation from the benchmarking of surveying and discussion with the board of health and the safety committee. So I'm seeking approval to both award the bid if it meets criteria, and Irene will do that work. And then I would decide to move forward with the contract and implement if we get feedback from our professionals that it makes sense. That's kind of where I feel I am tonight. That doesn't slow us down, lets me move quickly to take things forward. Now I don't open it up for discussion.
I have a question. I know in the past meeting, we had talked about doing it to a certain amount. Like, so if we awarded a bid, would it be to a certain amount or would it be?
It's capped, it's capped in the in the bid spec.
Oh, in the bid spec. Okay, thank you.
So so in the past, um, the the budget for this was, if I recall, 575,000 or something like that.
The bid spec caps it, I think, it's under 300. So it provides a cap. It was between 250 and 300. I don't have the big spec in front of me because Irene isn't here tonight, so I apologize. But we specify the cap and then we actually set aside cares funds to match it. So, you know, we knew we had the, yeah, we had the allocation of COVID-based funding to cover it. And so that allowed the vote that you thought we should move forward to do the bid.
So there's no impact on the taxpayer, right?
There's no impact on the taxpayer. It does, you know, it does use funds which we are accessing to pay for other costs. But I'm, I think we've been working forward successfully to do that and need to remain committed if the data comes back to say it'd be valuable to do it. And I think the survey and the board of health's guidance would help us make that final decision about whether or not it meets our needs to move forward.
Amber, is there a duration of the contract or an ability to cancel the contract if it's no longer needed?
Well, it automatically diminishes against uh use, you know, in terms of cost impact. So you only get charged for those that are testing. So the cost would decline against the diminishment of the the impact of those using it. But it ends June, whatever the last day is school. The contract closes at the end of school. I'll I'll look back in there. See, so there's a built-in closure and the cost diminishes against as we diminish use. And I believe it has language that we can, and I'll have to go back and check.
So so we will be paying only what we are using. Is there a minimum that we need to use?
I can't remember. I have to go back into the bid spec. I think it does have, obviously, there's minimum setup and cost implementation. So, yeah. There would definitely be minimum expectations around the cost, all incorporated into the total bid though.
Do we know what the percentage of need for participation for it to be worthwhile?
They, they, that would be ironed out in the contract phase. I mean, they applied for the, they bid the project based upon the parameters of the spec, and the spec is very detailed. The spec is, I think we shared the spec with you. I mean, the spec is very detailed around the parameters of how the testing works. And they've opted to, we still have to go back in and match it against all of this. So the nursing staff and I and Irene will look at what we specified we wanted to implement and make sure that they match. And it would require that in order to get access to the awarding of the bid. But it definitely kind of, the spec controls the implementation pretty tightly.
And do we have a sense of why there's lower participation in our neighboring town? To just learn from best practice of whether?
Yeah, I've talked about it with the with the superintendents. I mean, they've encouraged, I mean, I think North Borough Southborough has the longest testing window because they had that sample, they did, and they've seen their numbers going down and they're trying to decide. They will provide testing through the close of the year, though I checked with Greg and they're going to maintain it. But they've definitely seen a percentage go down. And I think his sense is just that, you know, people are less concerned because they see there's less, we're past the surge in their mind and that they feel like they're not concerned that, they're less concerned they're being exposed to illness. They believe their routines are working and they've developed a profile. And those are some of the things. More people, again, faculty, as they get vaccinated, are less concerned about the embedded check. So there's some of that going on. And then they've also seen a decline in pool testing across the state, you know, the same thing. So as, so it echoes the same microcosm. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't end up with good participation in Westboro, but that's why a second survey makes sense. Because what people said, you know, a month ago and what they would say now, I'd be very different.
Can we create a contract that limits us to, you know, post, you know, post-vaccination of all teachers and staff? Is there, is there a possibility of a clause that takes us out of the pool testing at the point where all of our staff and faculty are vaccinated? Meaning, is that a possibility of when we would eliminate pool testing or or maybe the survey will answer it?
Yeah, I think, I think we should wait for the survey, but to the point of the purpose of pool testing, there's two layers. There are also parents interested in maintaining that when you bring back more students and you have them within three feet, that we're doing a good job with pool testing to make sure we're looking for asymptomatic students, right? So, you know, when they think about, families will have their own concerns about their child's exposure. So pool testing doesn't exist just for staff, you know, confidence. That was one of the main motivators, but not, but beyond that, it's also for confidence in in families. I think what you see in the diminishment of people's interest in pool testing is that they see the quarantining circles have worked and that without in-school transmission concerns, that they know, they feel confident that their child isn't going to get sick from someone else. So so they haven't felt as anxious to test. So I think there's some of that. It's kind of like an affirmation of the design. that people feel that the other mitigating features are the more important. But again, some of that's posturing. We can't really understand what makes people feel like they would or wouldn't participate. But probably a combination of all of that creates a downward trend.
No, that's helpful. And I know, and I know it was for students too, you know, especially specifically for, you know, the asymptomatic cases. I'm just curious about the diminishing, you know, the diminishing interest and whether that can push us into it being in an effective use of our safety. Another layer, it's a layer of our safety protocols. And if it has lack of use at some point, is there a way to remove it?
But, yeah, there's some, there's certainly some built-in protection in that the cost is against use. So as it diminishes, so does the cost impact, not the work. But this design, the majority of the work is displaced to home for, it's a, it's a home test kit. So you're coming in, you're scanning it, dropping it and going to class because that's why we committed to it because it didn't have the impact of, you know, the classroom and instructional time. And so, not that it doesn't have implications for time. So I, I think it's an important decision and I think the pieces to make the decision are to talk to board of health, to talk to safety committee, to look at the data. And then make sure we have a contract bidder that meets the spec, which needs to be checked. References need to be called and then if they don't get ruled out, I would be seeking the authority to go ahead and implement the contract as bid with your authority.
And I'm just reminding us that our initial intent was to put it towards the in-person groups that were coming in so that we were targeting it towards that, those in-person. So even as we do the survey, I think that's an important reminder of what that looks like. Just to ask those questions so that we get the data that says this could be really useful. Thank you.
Raghu, did you have any other questions?
No, so the survey should tell us exactly which way to go. If the survey comes back where, again, I come back to minimum, where the interest falls below the minimum, then it sure will be something to consider as a no-go.
Yeah, I think the board of health has been really sound consult as we've gone about this not being viable enough to give us the impact we need. And I certainly will keep you updated as the survey results come in. I certainly will, you know, I'll update you as we move forward.
All right. All right. So I'm ready to, I'm ready to make a motion to give authority to the director of finance to award the bid to a qualifying bidder and the authority to the superintendent to enter into a contract pending the criteria that we set forward and following the confirmation of a final decision to move forward after a survey and consultation with the board of health.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Sarah.
Dulay, yes.
Raghu.
Nandan, yes.
Lisa.
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve.
Dret, yes.
And Vincent, yes. So Amber, you and Irene have authority to award bids and enter into a contract, you know, based on all the groundwork that you're going to do to see if this is actually a good use of our resources or, you know, put the money towards something else. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. That was a complex motion.
I know. I appreciate all the research that you put into this as well. I know that you've been looking into pool testing for a while now and I appreciate all of your research in that.
It's just a mixed, yeah, it's a total mixed bag and a split down the middle districts that have opted absolutely not and districts that committed to it. It's just, it's somewhat of a hard decision to make because it's, it's been all over the place, the data in terms of different districts. So thank you. I'm doing the best I can, working with good consultation from board of health and, you know, and the companies that will work with us. So we'll keep taking steps forward. Why don't we push forward? It's getting late. Through the next piece you need.
Yep. So we just have this last piece, this last agenda item, Warren article. It's a bid update for the high school gymnasium partitions. And Steve, I think you had shared with us some, I think we have the bid update here in our packet.
Yeah, this originally started out as a guesstimate at three hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, based on various discussions that we had and the particular efforts of Bob Ferguson to ferret out those who would be interested in proposing on this. As we can see from the bid summary, that the bid came in at two hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars, you know, which makes the effort of the facilities department well significant in terms of being able to reduce the price on these petitions. The, one thing I would say is that bids are normally valid for thirty days. And one of the things that we need to do is that this money is not available, as far as I know, until the town meeting votes it. Originally, this would have been fine based on the bid date being within a month of town meeting. But because town meeting has now moved to May, we need to make sure that these guys will honor their bid through, through the town meeting, through the end of May. So I, other than that, I think I would move that the school committee support the award of the petitions to this company, DRF Incorporated Interior Systems, in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars pending the availability of funds as may be voted by town meeting.
I'll second that motion. Thank you both. Any discussion on that?
Certainly excited to see the price go down. That's always good. That's good.
And Steve, I guess, I don't often ask this, but like there's a warranty for all this. I know when I was reading through this, it seemed like a lot of electrical and police and like stuff like that. So maybe, like I'm assuming that there's a warranty that comes with this?
Yeah, very.
Yeah, I wouldn't know exactly what's offered, but the bid documents would have requested a warranty. And historically, there's a one-year warranty on labor and materials. And many times, there's a two-year warranty on the performance according to the specification. But I don't know the exact details as to what was in the bid package that facilities put together for the work.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Sarah.
Dulay, yes.
Raghu.
Nandan, yes.
Lisa.
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve.
Dret, yes.
And Vincent, yes. So we can make those updates to that warrant article. And, you know, kudos to the groundwork that was laid for that because, you know, the estimate that we had for it was validated with these bids. So it's good work. All right. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. The next meeting of the school committee will be on Wednesday, March twenty-fourth at six PM. And we're going to move into executive session.
I can, I can do it. I have it.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
I'm moving, vote to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Purpose Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, teachers' contract. And under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two G two, Purpose Seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from February twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I heard a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Sarah.
Dulay, yes.
Raghu.
Nandan, yes.
Lisa.
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve.
Dret, yes.
And Vincent, yes. Five zero. We are now in executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Well, this is where I leave. Have a good night, guys.
Bye, Kyla.